All right, hello everyone. I'm going to officially open this meeting and then I'm going to call it to order 5:48. But now I'm going to recess for a quick closed session and we'll be back at 6:00.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound. Enter your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise just press pound to continue. You are in the meeting now. You are the first participant. Please stand by.
Check, check, mic check.
Okay, we're ready. So good evening, I'm calling the meeting of November 18th, already November 18th, to order at 6:02. Tonight, we have the honor of having Rudy Alvarez, our new trustee Alvarez's father, to go ahead and lead us in our pledge. So you want to go ahead and start us?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have nothing to report out from closed session. So as you can see, we have a new person at our diocese evening. And so I believe that we are going to do our ceremonial oath of office to officially bring in and celebrate our new trustee Alvarez to our group. So should we go ahead and have who will be swearing you in this evening? And then could you introduce everybody named this evening?
Already. So it'll be my mother doing. From political science.
Mike, please.
Oh, there we go. Professor of political science from Fullerton College, Jody Balma, and my father and partner. Thank you all for being here.
Absolutely. Okay, so, okay, we can all, you can stand. Want to go up there, Chad? So let's, yep, you both can stand up. Come over here so everybody can see you. Okay. And just so that you know, we actually are, we live stream. Okay. And so we have a camera right up there and we have a camera over there. Don't worry.
Okay. Okay. Do I start with?
And what I would do is.
Goodbye.
Okay.
Say goodbye.
Hello, hello. So, okay. Emotional to me. Okay. Okay. I, Miguel Alvarez, do solemnly swear.
I, Miguel Alvarez, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will, and to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And that I will, well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, everyone come up front.
I hate taking pictures when I don't have on my big shoes. All right, okay. Now, well, we will, we do have a section in our, in our agenda for a special presentation from a Girl Scout troop, but I think they're on their way. So we'll continue to move forward. And then when they get here, we'll just break and then we'll allow them to come up and do their presentation. Does that sound okay with everybody? If you notice that we do have Dr. Hammett here. Dr. Pletka is, he's ill today. He was here for part of the day and then he, I think, became more ill as the day went on and so we would much rather him not be here breathing on us, so.
Dr. Pletka?
Going to try and, I think he's trying to, to be on Zoom.
He's going to be on Zoom. I'm going to reconnect him right now, so you're going to hear some dial tones for a moment.
Do I need to do anything?
Nope, just a second.
So if he comes in, then that's great.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we are going to move on and so we will start with our reports for the evening. So Dr. Hammett, would you like to start with us?
Absolutely, so.
Enter your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise just press pound to.
So when Dr. Pletka was here today, we did remind him that sharing is not caring when it comes to illnesses right before the Thanksgiving break.
There is one other participant in the meeting.
So yes, he decided to head home, but he will be joining us via Zoom. So we are very pleased to announce that we, the district, will be receiving a golden bell at the upcoming CSBA conference on December 3rd. And that is for our national award-winning speech and debate program. So it will be very exciting for us to bring back the golden bell and we will have another ceremony to be able to show that golden bell to our community and bring some of our speech and debate students back. And we look forward to being able to celebrate the accomplishment of our students with our community and our families. One of the amazing things that happened recently is we had some issues where people were not getting their SNAP benefits and everyone knows from watching the news, there was a delay in the SNAP benefits due to the federal shutdown. And our team stepped right up. We have a team that deals with our social emotional learning and deals with our student supports. They immediately began contacting families across the district to find out what families were in the highest level of need. In other words, what families were 24 hours or less from being out of food. And we were able to quickly compile a list of 95 families that needed help. And by leveraging help from our community partners, leveraging help from local businesses, we were able to put together food boxes for families that provided food based on family size and also based if there were any allergy needs or any food needs. And it was absolutely amazing what the team was able to do in the matter of four days, but really in 48 hours. They were able to put together food supplies for families that could last up to four days. And the amount of work and effort is amazing. We have a few slides just to see, you could see the team putting them all together and I'd like to thank our SSAs. I'd like to thank Rosanna Fonseca. I'd also like to thank Juan, who, Juan Fonseca, they're not married. And additionally, we had Grace in the office and every single SSA at every school who was able to know the families, identify the families, and be able to get the food from our central kitchen. Our central kitchen was very involved and to get all that food sorted, brought out, and taken to our families the very same day and was able to provide them the food that lasted them for, through the weekend, a week ago. So really grateful for our team and all the great work that they were able to do. It's absolutely amazing how many of our community partners stepped up. So you can see through the pictures just what a, what a true community event. Fullerton is such an amazing place. When there's a need, when there's things that need to be done, when there's a need to be met, everyone steps up and everyone pitched in. So thank you, team, for all of that great work. I also, we are coming up on the Thanksgiving holiday and it just be, it's a great time for all of us to reflect on all the things we're thankful for. And here in Fullerton, this is truly such an amazing district. And I think it's hard when you are, when you live in the district and you're part of the district, you don't recognize how great the district is. But we have such amazing people and that's the thing that really, I think, separates our district from so many other districts. And just a few things that I have been reflecting on and am very thankful for is our students. That our students, and as I'm out at schools and I see students in classrooms, they bring joy, they bring hope, they raise curiosity and it's so great to see all of our students. I'm thankful for our staff and the dedication and commitment and consistency in performing amazing work every day. There is not a day that doesn't go by that I'm not somewhere in the city and I see a staff member doing something that's above and beyond. And, or I go to a school and I see the extra effort our staff members put in across the board in all of our departments. It's just amazing. I also am thankful for our parents. We have such a supportive and strong parent community. Today, I had the great opportunity of going to Sunset Lane for their PTA meeting and then I was able to go join the fourth district council and talk to the fourth district about the PTA, local council, Fullerton council, about the PTA and what they're doing. The number of activities over the next six weeks is mind boggling. It is just amazing how many things. It is just amazing how many things they have planned. And we have such strong, supportive parents. And finally, I'm, I'm just thankful for our community and everything that our, that our community does. All of the support that truly this is, this is an education community. And I'm very grateful for, for everything in the city of Fullerton. Grateful for all of you being here tonight. And I'm grateful for you, Board, for all that you do to help lead us and help support everything that we're doing here in the Fullerton School District and providing us with clear direction. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will move on to information from our Board of Trustees. Trustee Chow, you want to start?
Hello, yeah. Um, so I, I think I've been thinking a lot about the community recently. Um, uh, just like you, uh, Dr. Hammett. Uh, one of the first things that kind of got me thinking about it was the response from the district uh, to the, uh, suspension of SNAP benefits. Um, to see how vital that resource is for so much of our families. And just to see how willing the teachers, the staff, the parents, the community was, how willing they were to step up to find something, to do something, to not do nothing, right? To be like, it's such a huge problem, we can't do anything about it. Like, it, it was a really wicked problem to put your arms around. And to see the community step up and provide real help to the families, um, meant a lot to me. So thank you to everyone. Uh, and yeah, shout out to, uh, the social service assistants, um, Rosanna, right? Victor, the nutrition team, right? Thank you very much for that. The second thing that got me thinking about community, uh, was, um, some of the threats that were, um, happening to our schools, um, including Fern Drive. And so the, I, I think it's hard to imagine what it was like in that moment before you realized it was possibly, probably a hoax. And, uh, I'm really grateful for the teachers and staff at Fern Drive. Uh, and the, uh, the staff and the cabinet here at the district level. Shout out to Amber, making sure that our communications are running smoothly uh, to help parents understand what was happening out there. So that was the second thing that really got me thinking about this community. Uh, but the third thing was that I had an opportunity to, uh, visit my old elementary school at Laguna Road, uh, to go to an auditorium that was named after my old principal, Sully, and to see the Korean Dual Language, um, program provide its first cultural presentation. Um, and it, like, it was a little bit, I don't know, kind of heavy for me because I went to that school and I don't remember anything like that. Um, I, I remember, yeah, times change, right? Um, and I remember, uh, not seeing myself a lot in the community. Um, and to see that, how welcome that, um, that part of their community is now, you know, in the Fullerton School District, meant a great deal to me. So, uh, like Chad, like you said, I'm, I'm grateful and just honored to be a part of this community. So thank you.
Continue, not do the. Give them a little bit more time. Okay, gotcha. Yeah. Well, thank you, yeah. It's been a full month. Um, like James, I got to attend the Korean DLA showcase at, um, Laguna Road. And you're right, it was such a beautiful celebration with singing and dancing and drumming and, um, just a joyful celebration of Korean language and culture. That was really beautiful. Um, I got to enjoy some delicious food and company with the DLEC meeting this, uh, last week at Acacia. And we got to celebrate our Teacher of the Year with, uh, all of the Orange County teachers, a swanky dinner at Disneyland Hotel. But FSD was really proud to be represented by one of the six finalists with our teacher, Ms. Darcy Blake. And that was a really special night, um, as a parent who has experienced her as a teacher, to be able to recognize our great teachers and, and the work she does every day. Um, I also got to attend our PD, our professional development that was offered on November 1st, where our teachers learned about snorkel, a new AI tool that will help our writers. Um, but I really enjoyed the keynote from Dr. Jill Leal Howard. He talked on courageous classrooms. And I want to thank Dr. Brown especially for bringing him. Um, it was a really inspirational talk where he reminded us to center students, protect teachers, and turn equity into action. It was a great, great, uh, experience, I think, for all of our certificated staff to be able to be a part of that. And yes, I was gonna share about just my gratitude for the work that our staff did to respond to the needs of our families. Um, I think it was Rosanna who shared at a, a collaborative meeting with all of Full, Fullerton, when she said that this is not a burden for parents to bear alone, but the school district is here to partner and stand with our families. And we felt that, right? We saw, um, the way FSD wraps around children and their families as a holistic response, whether that's a hot meal, or counseling mental health, or supporting parents, parent meetings, and even economic opportunities. Um, we take that very seriously. And I saw not only our staff and our, our, like, people who are paid to do this work, but also our families jumping into, to work, our PTAs doing food drives. And, um, I just want to encourage us, you know, the work's not over. Some of those SNAP benefits might be returning, but, um, there's still a lot going on. And whether that's threat of deportation or cost of living rising, it's a hard time for many folks. And I think as we continue through the holiday season, I'm, I'm always encouraged by the way that people are generous with their time and their money and their talent. Um, but I wanted to end, I, I had a chance this last month to attend the press conference and release of the 2025 Orange County Human Trafficking Task Force Report, the victim report. And I'm a member of the task force. Um, in my personal day job, I work to bring prevention education to students uh, about human trafficking and commercial sexual exploitation to students throughout Orange County. And so I see the great need for this work. But what was new and perhaps shocking about this year's report was that for the first time in the 12 years that this report has been published, it's now the number of child victims of human trafficking that are being found and assisted here in Orange County now exceeds that of adults. So when you think about that, that means that there are more child victims in those short, short years from birth to 18, 17, not yet 18, that are being helped and found than all the adults from 18 to 100. And now, are there more victims out there who are not being found? Absolutely. Is it easier to spot a victim who's a child? When it's hard to identify if an adult is actually a victim, whether they're consenting or not and do, and do they want help or not? It's a lot more challenging. But what we saw is that it's, right now, the significant increase is especially credited to the exponential rise of sex extortion of our kids. So it's the online sexual abuse of children on the internet. And what that means is any child who has access to the internet is vulnerable. And we don't have to look very far from our headlines this week to see that this issue is pervasive. So I, I mean, I know this should scare us all into action. And our students need prevention education, protective approaches. And that starts, I believe, with developmentally appropriate education about body safety, about boundaries, and trusted adults, and how to get help. So that's why I know, since I've been on the board, I've been pushing our district to address these issues, whether it's online or in real life. Um, but I'm really excited that we've now formed a committee of teachers and experts that are looking at this issue, considering curriculum that exists already, and how we can both identify the best and adopt it to our programs to serve our students, to keep them safe. Thanks.
Thank you. Right. Vanessa, would you like to go next?
I would like to start today by saying, by welcoming trustee Miguel Alvarez to the dais as our new district one representative. Um, we are very excited to have you and we can't wait to collaborate with you to make our amazing, uh, Fullerton School District even, um, greater and to continue strengthening, strengthening the amazing work happening here at FSD. So welcome, bienvenido, felicidades, mama, papa, uh, partner, family. Uh, welcome, everybody. Um, it's definitely been a busy month. I keep forgetting that we haven't had a meeting. Because we did have a special meeting to a point, we actually haven't had a meeting since before Halloween. And so I was looking at my calendar when I was looking to write about my report and I was like, wait, we never talked about Halloween. We didn't talk about the Fall Festivals and all the fun and all the kids dressing up in costume. Um, and so I was very lucky to be able to have participated, um, in both Commonwealth's Fall Festival and Raymond's, um, Fall Carnival. It was so much fun seeing the children, especially at Commonwealth, where they had a trunk or treat and the families that were involved in putting all that together. And seeing all the kids line up for a parade and all of them dressed up, playing games. You know, I, I go to the Fall, uh, Carnival at our, my daughter's school, which is Raymond, every year. And so we know we have a silent auction. Um, and we know we have, you know, the music, the DJ. But just being able to see how much joy, a small carnival, and being able to dress up in costume for the kids is just amazing. Um, so I had a lot of fun. I got to volunteer at the ELAC booth in Seoposole, like we do every year. Um, it was delicious. Um, but also, the Dia de los Muertos, I'm sure a lot of you were able to see. Um, I was able to help put together one of the altars. But I'm sure all of you were able to see on social media because Amber is just amazing and puts every single, um, picture up of all the different schools that participated. Um, it's just so amazing to be able to see how our culture is celebrated. And I say our culture because it's, you know, multicultural. But how a lot of different cult, people come together and different races and different ethnicities come together to celebrate, um, all the different cultures in our, in our district. Also, our October 18th, Champions for Children. We didn't talk about that. Um, here at Pacific Drive, just down the street, it was a huge success. There were a lot of workshops, um, arts activities, multiple community partners that came to support and present. Um, but also, one of the things that really took my breath away was the family-created cultural displays that we had. We had tables with, um, one of the families, um, and that just caught my attention because I hadn't seen it before. I mean, I expected to see the different, um, clothing and the different food and the different, you know, um, languages. But one of the ladies who was there was, actually created a whole, um, sheet with her native dialect. Did you, I don't know if any of you see, saw that. Um, but it was, it was just so amazing. Our families were there to, you know, teach us and show us about their culture. Um, and just, you know, showcase the diversity of our district. Um, also, something really fun. I was invited to participate, to be a judge at the district's brand-new AI, what is it, Student Sleuth Event? How do you, Sleuth Event. I had no idea what it was about. They just said, Vanessa, would you like to come and be a judge? And I was like, of course, what are we doing, right? I didn't know what it was all about. But come to find out, they actually gathered students from all across our district and they were mixed into teams and were all challenged to do an investigation. Now, these are kids who not, don't necessarily, they came together in groups, but they don't necessarily know each other because they're from all over the district, right? And they all, throughout the day, got to work in little groups and they had, um, different little stops where they learned different AI techniques and different things that they, um, could do to, um, let me look at my notes. Um, to create problems that they see in their district um, and how to find solutions. So they had to create the problem and then find a solution for that problem and do it in a way where the children in their school would want to participate. So there were a lot of incentives in a lot of the problem solving, which I thought was genius because, you know, who doesn't want to do things with four incentives? Um, but it was very inspiring to see the kids dive into topics like recycling, anti-bullying, um, campus safety, and then them come up with, this is the issue and this is how we are going to solve it. And so it was just something, um, you know, for them to be able to communicate with each other and be innovative, again, all working with AI, and being able to create their own presentation. And they only had three minutes to present it. So it was, uh, a lot of these kids, true geniuses, I, I tell you. Um, so I was very happy to be, to have been a part of that. It was a lot of fun. Um, again, I also attended the Orange County Teacher of the Year where Ms. Darcy Blake was honored. Congratulations again, Ms. Blake. We are very proud of her. Um, but also, um, following up with, Dr. Chad just said, Dr. Ham, sorry. I used to say Dr. Chad. Um, about the food boxes in our district. Um, I was at the Dolphin Market today. And I understand, I don't think Jenny's here, but I understand that tomorrow you're gonna be working again on more food boxes. Um, so, you know, the teams, the Hub Nutrition Services, um, our SSAs, our community schools, um, the Hub, the SEL team, it is amazing how much our community can benefit from our groups just coming together. Um, and so I, I really want to thank you all in advance because I know you're gonna be doing all this work again tomorrow, starting tomorrow, um, for really your continued dedication to our families and your compassion mostly. Because it really does take a lot of compassion to be able to do this, this hard work and heavy lifting, um, tedious work. But also, a reminder, um, to every single person who is listening and watching that we do have a food drive going on right now. And a lot of this food is really gonna go and, uh, help a lot of the families that these boxes are being made for. And then whatever is left over, from what I understand, whatever is not used, is gonna be taken to the, um, Dolphin Market where we, oh, I see you, hi. I, I hadn't seen you that back there, Rosanna. I was looking for you out here. Um, is gonna be taken to the Dolphin Market where every, families can go once a week to get food, if they need extra food. Every Tuesday and Thursday, I was there today, I was able to witness um, and help with some of the families that were there, um, getting their food. So I just, again, wanna thank our families, thank the, our Fullerton School District. Um, if you've already donated, thank you so much. If you haven't and you have the means and the heart to do it, please do. Everybody should be able to donate at least a can of soup um, and put it in the office and, you know, make sure that we, we are helping feed our families. And finally, because I told you I was gonna do it today, I want to thank Ms. Rosanna Fonseca. We were at an ELAC meeting today. And I love the fact that Rosanna is making her rounds to every single one of our schools, whether it's through our ELAC, um, at our DELACs, at our PTA meetings, or a coffee with a principal. And she is reminding our families that our district is a safe district. And she is updating, um, all of our families on our new laws, like SB 49, AB 98. And, you know, it, it's important that we provide this information. Again, even though we've already done it last year, we have a lot of new families who are new to the district and have not been able to take advantage of our, um, workshops and everything that we do here or done at the district to let them know that we do have, um, procedures and we do have protocols to make sure that every child in our district feels safe when they are in school. So again, thank you to all our students, our families, our staff, and all of our community partners, um, that help us make Fullerton just, you know, the great school district that it is. Thank you.
All right, trustee Alvarez, you ready?
I am.
Could be as shorter as long as you'd like.
No pressure, no pressure. Uh, well, good, good evening, community members, parents, teachers, and staff. I, it's been, it's an honor to be here tonight as the newly appointed trustee representing Area 1. Uh, since my selection, I've been deeply engaged in onboarding and learning about what makes Fullerton School District inside, internally, a great place. I know that as an education city and being a, a student from the district, uh, the opportunities, one, you know, have grown exponentially. But two, just being able to see all of the inner workings of the district has been great. I met with our incoming interim superintendent, Chad Hammett, uh, to receive an overview of the district and, uh, review some of the, you know, board priorities and agenda items that we have. Um, and I had the privilege of going to Acacia Elementary, uh, attending the DLEC meeting, where I got to see our parents and staff discuss how we can better support our learners. And really, it's a great opportunity to see how we are coming together as a community and to see the families in the room. It's, you know, multilingual families, um, different racial families. You know, again, you have Korean, you have Latino, you have just different populations all in one place. And to see that is a, is a beautiful thing. And I felt inspired by the passion in that room and a reminder that when families have a voice, their students will thrive. And being able to have that in a diverse district is a wonderful thing that makes Fullerton a unique, um, school district. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge, I know my colleagues have also talked about the government shutdown, so I won't go deep into that, but I just want to say that I am proud of the way that, how our district responded. Um, and it was done in a way that was very swift and compassionate for our families who need food. And being able to work with our partner organizations like Pathways of Hope and some of the other organizations that are supporting to provide. and some of the other organizations that are supporting to provide access to meals is really important, especially for our families in the south side of Fullerton and other parts of Fullerton that need the resources. And as your new trustee for Area 1, I'd like to share just a little bit more about myself. I know we had our interview process, but I've gotten questions about who are you? What are you, what are you, what are you about? And so I just wanted to take a moment quickly to share a brief overview about who I am and, you know, why I'm really deeply committed to this work. First and foremost, family is very important to me. They're here today and they were a big part of my life. I'm the son of an immigrant father from El Salvador who came to this country seeking a better life and more access and opportunities, and a Mexican-American mother who worked tirelessly, like the families that are, that are supporting their learners here in, in our area and in the school district. Growing up in South Fullerton, I saw firsthand how resources aren't always evenly distributed for, for many of our families. And so, you know, being a product and going through that lived experience is really important. And that's the lens that I bring into this work. Being a proud product of our local schools, Maple Elementary, Richmond, and Laguna Road, and Ladera Vista, I'm grateful to the educators who shaped my life and my journey. I just want to give a shout out to Debbie Rhodes, Randa Schmafeld, Lori Hancock, and my avid teacher, Mrs. Smith. So thanks to the teachers like them and the programs offered here in the district and community orgs that I became the first in my family to graduate from college. And starting at Fullerton College and doing work in the Political Science Department. Thank you so much, Jodi Balma, who's here today, was my professor at Fullerton College. Being able to attain a baccalaureate degree from UCLA in Political Science and Chicano Studies focusing on educational access and equity really would not have been if it weren't for the educators in this space and for the families who are wanting to support their students to thrive. And so I really thank the Fullerton School District for that. And in terms of what I want to bring to this board, my career has been dedicated around expanding access to quality education and workforce opportunities. And so having worked across UC Irvine and UC Berkeley and several community colleges in the state, being able to develop the programs that connect our students to real career outcomes is going to be really important, especially in the ever-shaping global economy. And so these experiences combined with my personal journey as a first-generation college graduate drive my commitment to ensuring that every student in Fullerton has the opportunity to succeed. Whether it's a child who needs a support with an IEP or a GATE student seeking enrichment or a family navigating our DLA program, every learner in FSD deserves to feel seen and heard and, and have a path to thrive in, really in, in our local economy, but in a global one that's changing. And so while I don't have yet children of my own, not to say that I will not, but I will, I want everyone to know that I view this, this district and every student in this district as one of my own. I am a, I'm a big brother, a mentor and an educator myself, and I take seriously the responsibility to listen and to advocate and to make sure that our resources are invested in the programs and services that will yield results in student growth, achievement, and opportunity. So I'm here to serve and to be your voice for our working parents, for our guardians that are juggling multiple priorities, and for every family who wants the very best for their children. Together, we will ensure that Fullerton School District continues to lead with excellence, equity, and heart. So I appreciate being entrusted by the community to serve. And I look forward to continuing to work with our board members and with the district to bring quality outcomes for our learners.
Thank you. Thank you, and welcome. At this point, I'm going to stop. It looks like we have our Girl Scout troop that is here with us this evening. I believe they're going to have a, do they have a presentation for us this evening? Would they like to make it at the podium or would they like to come up? Are they going to, yes, to the podium? Thank you. This is Girl Scout troop from Sunset Lane who's going to talk to us a little bit about their butterfly garden. All right, you guys are, it's yours, it's all yours.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for your time. Today, we're going to be presenting our Silver Award about Sunset Lane's Butterfly Garden. Oh, okay, so I'm London.
I'm Leah.
I'm Lauren.
I'm Shiloh, and we're Troop 7127.
Okay, so a little bit about us is that we are all former Sunset Lane alumni. We are all currently freshmen at Sunny Hills High School, and we all have siblings that attend Sunset Lane Elementary. So after speaking with our board member, James Cho, we realized that we can make an impact with our environment as well as our former elementary, so a double win. So with climate change, the population of monarch butterflies has been rapidly decreasing in the past years. And after looking back and collecting data, we realized that the proficiency of, of overall science at Sunset Lane is much higher than the average of the state's average, while the proficiency of life science is much lower and has room to improve. Now, if you look on the screen, you can see that the light pink represents a proficiency of overall science, while the dark pink represents a proficiency of life science. So our goal was to build a butterfly garden at Sunset Lane to, one, support the migration of the monarch butterfly, and also to encourage a culture of science at Sunset Lane to support with stamina cast. And thus, Sunset Lane's Butterfly Garden was created, a living life science lab consisting of eight pods of native milkweeds, nectar plants, and puddlers. This is us, Troop 7127, working in the butterfly garden. And that picture is Sunset Lane's official certification as a monarch waystation, the only one in the Fullerton School District. So the garden is designed to work two ways. First, to be a garden that the butterflies will actually use to eat, drink, rest, and grow. And also, classes can use the garden as an observational life science lab so that students can see science happening in real time. Students will become scientists by observing and recording changes, researching ideas, and asking questions. So in our garden, each pod includes native narrowleaf milkweeds for the butterflies to eat the nectar and also caterpillars to eat the leaves. These are our native nectar plants that we have in each pod, which includes common gumplant, purple haze coast aster, white and pink yarrow, red-flowered buckwheat. And we chose these native nectar plants because they're specifically native to Southern California. And we chose the most appropriate plant for our monarch butterflies. Now, these are puddlers. Puddlers are used for our water source for our monarch butterflies and/or other insects.
So with all signs, there is a safety factor, and all milkweed are considered a neurotoxin. So we just always encourage the kids and, like, teachers and everyone to look but not touch. So this is a sign, the look but do not touch policy that we have implemented. And these signs are in all the eight pods in the garden. So the milkweed sap is the most toxic part. So we always have kids wash their hands after a visit to the garden. And some touch alternatives that we have chosen are to use things like chopsticks or sticks, even a pencil, if you want to lift, touch, and point. So these are safety videos that we have. There is a lower, lower elementary video and an upper elementary video. And they're just to make sure that everyone is following the safety guidelines.
My apologies. Hello, translation team. My name is Elizabeth E. I am the project manager, sorry, project advisor for the Silver, Silver Award project. And so we realized a butterfly garden, like, how cute. But we wanted to make sure that there was something more substantive with it. So if you see behind me, there are actually three links, three resources. We wanted, number one, for students to be able to have research skills. I am an educator that has been in, been in education for the last 23-plus years. And kids need skills as far as research is concerned. So much of our world today, like, you've got to collect your data, right? And how, and you really being able to hone those skills at a younger age would be awesome. So we definitely have a resource page where students, where teachers can go in. Students can go in and they can research information, not only on the butterfly, but actually the climate change and multiple variations of the butterfly itself. We have the kid information page because we got to, we got to keep it little kid-friendly, right? And then if you notice that these are, butterflies are life science. And so one of the things that I made sure that the girls did is that there are sample lessons and mini-units specifically geared towards the NGSS standards so that everything that teachers are doing is NGSS standard specifically based for life science and how the butterflies actually work into those standards. And so students are doing grade-based standardized work and not just looking at pretty butterflies.
And then these are just the little friends that have already come into our garden. And yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much for this presentation. Are we taking a picture? There's little cupcakes for the girls?
Cupcakes, take some cupcakes.
Always a joy to have our own students make presentations for us at our board meetings. So we truly appreciate all the time and effort. Speaking from a Girl Scout leader for many, many years, I know how hard that is. And I know how important it is for your, for your awards. So thank you all and thank you guys for coming and good luck on that. And we'll be, that's a bronze award? Silver? So we were waiting for your next, for your gold, okay? Okay. All right, thank you. All right. So we'll move back into our board reports. I'm going to hold off on mine. It's always nice when you're last because you really can say, okay, they all said it. And so for the sake of time, I'm going to move on to our information from our association's DLAC. Do we have a DLAC presentation this evening? All right, perfect.
Good evening, President Berryman, school board members, Superintendent Dr. Plutka, Deputy Dr. Hammett, members of the executive cabinet, and all families who are here and listening. My name is Mira Zamora, and I am the DLAC chairperson. On behalf of the DLAC committee, I would like to extend a warm welcome to our new trustee, Miguel Alvarez. We look forward to working with you. We will also like to express our gratitude to Acacia Elementary School, Principal Rachel McCormick, and all the parents for hosting our second DLAC meeting of the year. The school staff and parent volunteers welcome us with wonderful hospitality and thoughtful parting gifts. During this meeting, we held elections for two positions whose terms had ended. We are pleased to announce our newly-elect DLAC members, Grace Wu, Wu, from Laguna Road, and Iliana Camacho from Pacific Drive. We wish all Fullerton families a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. PTA?
Good evening, Dr. Plutka. He's not here online. Hi, Dr. Hammett. In the meantime, President Berryman and members of the board. My name is Joanne Cho, and I continue to have the pleasure of serving as president of the Fullerton Council of PTAs 2526. We at Fullerton Council of PTA want to say thank you to all of our FSD board members, principals, superintendents, and assistant superintendents for attending our annual Fullerton Council of PTA President and Principal Luncheon on October 22nd. Seems like so long ago now. It is a great time connecting with all of you in our PTA units. At the event, we wanted to let everybody know that we presented Dr. Plutka with the Golden Oak Honorary Service Award. For those of you who do know, this is like the highest honor in the PTA service for all of the years of service to the community as he retires in February. Fullerton Council of PTA memberships continue to grow. We are currently at 4,297 members across from our PTA unit schools. All of our schools rely on our PTA membership and donations to make a positive difference in the students' lives. Every membership counts. We have links on our FCPDA website. If you need help joining a PTA unit, please reach out to the council directly and we'll be happy to assist you. So as we head into the holiday season, our PTA units are planning for our annual Pathways of Hope program, which, by the way, has been 40 years we've been doing this at the Fullerton District. It's, it's pretty cool. During that, this is which we collect books, toys, stuffed animals, gift cards, and food for our local families. Foods in the FSD and Fullerton High Schools, schools from both FSD and Fullerton High School districts will be running on their own collections at their school sites. Schools will be volunteering at the Pathways of Hope Distribution Center, helping local families shop for the families' toys and food needs. Please consider donating items at your individual school sites. I think we're all saying the same thing, right? We especially need items for our teenagers. That's one thing that, and we lack a lot of it. We always think of our young ones, but the teenagers need that. Oftentimes, they're the population that's kind of overlooked. So at Fullerton Council of PTA, we hosted a Reflections Art Showcase at the Fullerton Museum Center on Friday, November 7th, from 6 to 8. Shout out to James Cho for being there. This event was so inspiring to see the incredible artwork, the creative dances, and hearing the marvelous poetry on, these kids were actually saying live there. It was great to even witness the kids when they were actually doing their musical renditions or whatever you can call it. It was just wonderful to see our FSD students and the way that they felt so seen. It was, it was nice. So we welcome anyone to attend our council meetings, like Dr. Hammack did, and are, as held a first Tuesday of every month at 9:30 at the Fullerton Joint Union High School Boardroom. You will hear from our superintendents and be able to ask those questions. We had a really great one about Faciltron today. It's exciting. The exact dates of our meetings will be posted on our website, fullertoncouncilptad.org. You can reach us at fullertoncouncilptainfo@gmail.com. And we welcome any input and we're happy to answer questions, so please reach out. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, CSEA. And just to reiterate, as you are doing your toy drives or your gift drives this year, the teenagers really do, are the ones that do get lost, right? Everyone likes to buy the little gifts for people. But, you know, remember the soccer balls, the journals, the curling irons, the, you know, the things that our teenagers like.
Good evening, President Berryman, board of trustees, Dr. Plutka on Zoom, Dr. Hammett, and community and cabinet. My name is Tatiana Ortega. I am proud to serve as CSEA's vice president. We continue to hold our monthly pile meetings to strengthen the positive work relationships between management and classified staff across the district. I want to take a moment to highlight the incredible collaboration happening with maintenance, operation, and Encore. Together with CSEA, Eddie Carver Hall and Jason Chung, we've been working closely to plan and support the expansion Encore programs in the coming year. We are also happy to share that our members have passed the TA and MOUs. Thank you, district. We appreciate everyone's participation, engagement, and commitment to moving our chapter forward for our members. Our chapter met this month to begin preparing for our annual CSEA Holiday Social in December and to discuss our Adopt a Family Holiday Initiative. Each year, our members bring joy to families in need within the FSD community, entirely funded by their monthly dues. This year, we are honored to support a family from Maple and a family from Golden Hill. We also would like to extend a warm welcome to our new board member, Miguel Alvarez. We look forward to partnering and collaborating with you. Welcome to FSD. One last shout out to the amazing staff, support staff, and teachers and administrators in the district here for the recent incidences that happened last week at Fern Drive. We commend their collaboration and commitment and working together as a team. We commend their collaboration and commitment and working together as a team with their families. As always, thank you for the continued support of our classified staff and members and have an amazing holiday.
Thank you. All right, PETA?
No report tonight.
Have a good holiday. Thank you. Have a great holiday as well. Esma?
No report.
Have a great holiday, okay. Sepa?
Have a great holiday, no report.
Okay, have a great holiday. Thank you. All right. We will now move on. We're going to move on to public comments. So the board meeting follows rules of decorum. Per board policy 9323, individuals, speakers shall be allowed three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. The total time allowed for public comments shall be 30 minutes. Public comments about an item that is on the agenda will be heard at the time the agenda item is considered by the board. Public comments about an item that is not on the posted agenda will be heard at the beginning of open session when called upon by the board president. No action or discussion may take place on an item that is not on the posted agenda, except by expressively authorized by law. Since the board cannot take action on items that are not on the agenda, such items will be referred to the superintendent for handling. Board members may request that an item be placed on a future agenda for further discussion. The board president and the superintendent will determine the best time and place for an item on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the board are invited to complete and submit a request to speak slip and provide it to the executive assistant. These slips are available at the entrance. And I do have one public comment for this evening. Any others? Just the one, and it's on a non-agenda item. So I'm going to bring up Anna Andrieva. Thank you. Andrea A., come on, or Anna A., come on up. Okay, thank you.
Hello? Perfect. Dear FSD board members and administrators, my name is Anna Andrieva. Some of you may remember me speaking to me during the LTL situation earlier this year. It's nice to meet you in person today. I'm here to address a different issue, a broader issue, which is student recruitment in Fullerton School District. Now, the word recruitment typically doesn't apply to elementary schools. However, with declining enrollment, I believe it's essential for us to think proactively about how we attract and retain families in the school district. Briefly, my background is in finance, business intelligence, and recruiting. I currently work with the CDS Lab School at Fullerton College as a consultant, where I interact with parents of preschool-aged children on a daily basis. I'm also a parent here at the school district. My son Edgar attends the LTL classroom and my daughter will be an entering kindergartner next year. Through my own enrollment experience, the LTL situation, and my work at the lab school, I've observed several gaps that may be causing FSD to lose some potential students. So, number one, limited awareness of FSD programs. And I'm speaking here about preschool, DLA, multi-age, and this is inside our district and outside of district. Number two, as far as I know, there is no simple way for prospective parents to sign up for updates, on tours, information sessions, et cetera. So a system like what we have as current parents, where we get text messages telling us, hey, there is a DLA info session, the tours have been announced for so-and-so, so a way for parents to be reminded and easily updated if they are interested in our school district. Number three, as far as I know, also a lack of centralized source, one-page flyer, a one-page landing page, like an overview session to clearly explain to the parents all of the available options in the school district. It seems like this information is distributed on a piecemeal basis at this point. And last, as far as I know, no district-wide system to track families from initial interest to enrollment and/or fallout. So as we experienced with the LTL situation, we didn't know why, what happened to the families that didn't show up. And I would love to know personally, excuse me. Based on my professional experience, I would like to make a few recommendations for you to consider. Number one, develop a year-round recruitment strategy to get the message out to a broader scope of parents inside and outside the district. Number two, strengthen partnerships with community organizations to amplify our marketing. Make them market for us. And these are preschools, community organizations, churches, et cetera. Also, large employers in our school district, such as Fullerton College, Cal State Fullerton, that have employees who could enroll their kids under the Allen Bill. Number three, create a system to track prospective students. So for parents to submit interest and for us to be able to know what happens to them, whether they enroll or they move on to somewhere else. Number four, use the resulting data to guide our strategy. 30 seconds! And then finally, obviously, somebody has to do the work. So find or assign staff to actually do this work so it gets done and whoever it is is accountable for the results. I would like to thank you for your time and consideration. I believe a stronger, more intentional recruitment strategy can help Fullerton School District reach more families and strengthen our community. I would be happy to further discuss this topic with you. I would like to thank all of you for your work on behalf of our students. Personally, I'd like to thank trustee Henshett for her work on behalf of kids and child exploitation. Welcome, new trustee member Alvarez. I'm also Bruun, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Very timely information. As a board, we do feel it's very important. Enrollment is one of those things that we are really focusing on, so it's a perfect opportunity for us to take a look at your recommendations. So thank you. And thank you for giving it to us in writing, so we have that. All right, moving along, so we need to approve our minutes from the October 14th meeting. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the last school board meeting.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes from the 14th, meeting of the 14th. Any questions? Anybody? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're moving on to the agenda approval. I'm going to ask, for the sake of time, we do have a presentation, we have several discussion and action items tonight, one of which where we have several groups here that are going to present to us. So what I would ask is that we approve the agenda, but move discussion action item A to before our consent agenda, if that's possible? And then move on to our consent agenda after A, and then we'll go on with the rest of our presentation. So, so it's been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded that we approve our agenda with our changes. Anybody else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so with that said, what we're just going to do is now we are going to have our superintendent search firm presentations before our consent, and then we'll move back to item B. Just for a little bit of information on this one, am I talking, I'm talking about it right? Okay, okay. As you, as you guys all know, or if you don't, we have the retirement of our existing superintendent, Dr. Plutka, who Dr. Bob, who's been with us for 13 years, has submitted his, his time where he's going to go and enjoy his life a little bit more. And so in order to replace or go through the process of a new superintendent, this board has agreed or voted to hire a search firm to help us with this. As part of this search, what we're doing this evening is we are interviewing three search firms. What we have done is we've asked three search firms to come this evening. We have drawn their names by lottery before this meeting started on what order they're going to go into. And we're going to have each search firm have a 10-minute, they have up to 10 minutes to make a presentation. Our board will then ask any questions that we have of that particular search firm. Once the questions are answered, then that search firm will go into our little magic room. And then the other search firm will come in and we'll do that three times with our three search firms. After we're done with our presentations and any questions that we have as a, as a board, then we will deliberate and come up with a decision, vote this evening, on who we will use to help us with our very, very important superintendent search moving forward. Understanding that we do have things in place to help our district and there won't be any balls that are going to be dropped, but understanding that to get the best qualified candidates for our school district, we really want to run with this and we want to have this process done as fast as we can. Doesn't mean a superintendent will, will start any earlier than the next school year, we're not sure, but we definitely wanted to get the best candidate that we can. So that's why we're doing it this evening, that's why we're making the decision this evening. So if it looks like we're rushing it, we're really not. We really want to make sure that this process goes. And we've had some time to review our presentations, but then this evening is when they're going to actually do the presentation and answer questions. Does that sound good, my board up here? Pretty clear? All right. So on that note, our first presentation of our search firm is the COSCA Group. And so we can come up to the podium, you can introduce yourselves. You've got about 10 minutes to make a presentation.
Okay. Good evening, Board President Berryman, trustees. This is the COSCA Group. My name is Fred Navarro. Let me introduce my partners here, Ruth Ashley Perez, Ruth Perez Ashley, sorry, and Michael O'Neill. And if selected, this would be your team of consultants who would be with you on this journey. I'm going to start off by going over the why and what about the COSCA Group, okay? And what I think is important here is that you realize that this is a long-term process that's been developed over years. And to start with the why, I want to go back to the beginning, back to when Dr. COSCA was forming the group more than 25 years ago. By the way, Dr. COSCA was the principal of Nicholas for a while. And in that time, he was searching, or they were searching for their mission, their North Stars, what they were going to do as an organization. And what they landed on, or what he landed on, was focusing on the most significant actions that boards can take. And that is, first of all, to hire a superintendent. And if you've been to CSBA sessions, you'll always hear that that's your most important task. So taking that as their lead, Dr. COSCA and his team developed a multi-step process to seek out several candidates that could be presented to a board that would be the best fit for the board, best fit for the district, and best fit for the community. And that multi-step process has been in place for several years. I think at this point, you wonder, okay, so they have this goal, they have this mission, and they have this process, so what? And I think what's important here is that, so what is, what are the results? Well, back 15, back in 2015, I looked at a document that Dr. COSCA submitted to a local OC school district for a search proposal. And in that proposal, he had, he cited that in the 15 years the COSCA Group had been in place, they had 91% of their, of their superintendents had served for a minimum of five years or more. That's significant because right now, we have over 1,000 districts in the state of California, and every year, a third of them are seeking superintendents. So superintendent's tenure is, is important. So on our end, I'd like to let you know that while we haven't changed any of the process, we still use the same process, we are now pleased to report that 95% of our superintendent placements have served for a minimum of five years or more. I think that's important to keep in mind. The last thing I think is, is clear is that it's not so much why we do it and what we do, but how we go about it. And just to close up, I forgot to mention that I was a 40-year veteran of education. I finished my 40 years at Newport Mesa, where I served for eight years as superintendent, and had been there as a principal and director before, and that, you know, I stand ready to serve alongside of you. And I could tell you that we're really proud of our results and that we are a results-driven organization who always strives to serve above the norm. And next, I'd like to introduce Ruth Perez, who will give you a little background on herself and share some other.
Good evening, Madam President, board members, and community members and staff. I come to you from a place of gratitude, and so I thank you for this opportunity for us to share with you tonight. A little bit about myself, I am a proud graduate of Cal State Fullerton. That was a place that really emphasized to me that education was my calling. I retired a few short years ago as deputy superintendent from the Long Beach Unified School District. After 34 years, I started out in the classroom, became an elementary school principal, and then went into the district office as director of elementary schools, and then spent the last 16 years of my career as assistant superintendent and deputy superintendent of human resources. One of the things about the COSCA Group, and I've been with them for two years now, is that we truly value commitment over compliance. And if you look in your presentation, you'll notice that you have unlimited stakeholder meetings. And so if you wanted us to meet with focus groups, if you wanted us to meet with eight, we'll meet with eight, 16, 24. You make, you call the shots and we'll be there for you. So valuing compliance or commitment over compliance, it really goes towards our commitment to communication. And that can be defined by our deliverable. We will engage you in confidential and trustworthy conversations to help guide you as you make these important decisions. We'll definitely be providing you with timely and weekly updates, and we'll be prepared to provide you with comprehensive reports. For example, we'll give you a report after we meet with all of the focus groups. And we will dig down with the hard data and the soft data and provide to you the common themes of your stakeholders. So we will also do the same with an online survey that will be in English, Spanish, and Korean, because we want to engage as many parents, students, staff members, and community members as possible. And within the larger slide deck, we identify the six phases of the search process and a proposed timeline. So we are prepared to start immediately with the systems we have in place to help you find the right leader for Fullerton School District. The other values for the COSCA Group are respect, transparency, professionalism, and integrity. And this can be evidenced by board members having access to a shared drive. So when we receive the applications, you will get it in real time. And you don't have to wait for a report for that. We will provide you with a complete summary of the reference checks for all viable candidates. And you can also be sure that our communication will be kind and clear. Lastly, I strongly believe that our team, Fred and Michael here, were skillful in communicating with candor and curiosity and a listening ear. And as we engage in these conversations, met with these attributes, you'll find that trust will be a product of those discussions. Now I will hand it over to my trustee colleague, Michael.
Good evening. I have a rather prepared statement, but I want to start by recognizing and sharing your belief in diversity, equity, access, and safety. I've worked with more than 100 school districts. I'm the only member of the COSCA Group who was not a superintendent. I did my PhD in organizational analysis, and life for some people is chosen, and for other people, life chooses their path. So I never became a superintendent. Instead, I began to serve superintendents and boards and develop curriculum and to work with individual schools, principals. I, I was a lead trainer for the California School Leadership Association and trained personally over 2,000 current school leaders across California. My part is about trust. Trust is a belief in someone's honesty, reliability, integrity, and in the confidence they will act as you expect. Tonight, we present to you that that someone is probably the COSCA Group. There are four aspects that I believe are important to trust. Number one is credibility. You've already seen and heard of the years the COSCA Group has willingly given to the incredibly crucial process of supporting a board as it's incredibly crucial process of supporting a board as it seeks a superintendent. You have seen as well the fit and longevity of the superintendents we have helped boards place. Every member of the COSCA group has an amazing personal history in public education. We bring to you the collective experience and wisdom of top leaders in education across California. I personally have worked nationally and internationally, developing curriculum and speaking in many different countries. Number two, I talk of commitment, and Ruth mentioned that. The COSCA group and the three of us here before you commit our full focus to your search. We're not going to be working on any other searches. We commit our collective and successful history, knowledge set, connection, and energy to you, the board, and to the Fullerton School District in this work now and the following years to come. That is part of our contract. Third is integrity. Fred, Ruth, and I have collectively served students and their families and communities for decades. We have served through successful times and challenging ones, and each of us has undertaken the most difficult of tasks. Work that was critical to a successful future for learners. We have given our time, talent, and reputation to the lives of those we serve. We promise you our full integrity in this process. We will listen to every one of your constituents and bring you their thoughts truthfully, fully, and without judgment. You deserve no less. Finally, I would speak of intuition. Research on successful leaders points to many aspects, but one of the most interesting of them is the strength they have in relying upon intuition. As you go through the interview process and narrow down your candidates, let your intuition play its part. And we would say to you, if you listen, your individual and joint intuition will tell you that the COSCA group is the right group for you. We offer you our credibility, our commitment, our integrity, and our intuition. To us, these four things are trust. Trust you can place in us. Fred?
I do want to go over some of our guarantees that we provide that have been in place ever since Dr. COSCA opened the group. First is that our fee is all-inclusive. There are no additional charges or whatever. If we do 10 forums, same price; 20 forums, same price. It's also important to know that this search firm, this team right here, will not be conducting any other searches. We will only be, if selected, we will be focused on your search only. And we do have a guarantee. If we aren't able to find a superintendent during the search, we'll run another search. If for some reason other than happens within two years, we will do another search. And finally, it's important to know that, you know, it's not just work we do now, but we will provide a year's worth of mentoring to the district for the new superintendent to support them in their transition, as well as a governance training for the board and their new superintendent to help you start building your governance team. Okay? Thank you very much. We are honored to have been here, and we look forward to hearing your decision.
Thank you. Don't leave. Do we have any questions from our board that, will you be willing to take a couple of questions if we get them?
Of course.
Anyone have questions?
I have a question. In terms of your sourcing strategy and top of funnel, in terms of how you, your talent network essentially, can you just dive a little bit deeper on how you, in terms of your talent network and what value proposition your firm has versus others that we're considering?
Okay, so first of all, we have a network of consultants throughout the state, so there are 30 of us in the state. When we begin a search, we will incorporate those connections as we come out with, one of the first things we will work with the board is to develop a brochure advertising your vacancy and what you're looking for, what the strengths of the districts are, what some of the needs might be, and some of the qualities you're looking for in your next leader. That will go out through all of our consultants, and they will begin the recruiting process. In our experience, we get anywhere between 15 and 30 applications per search. Some small districts may be less, but for our average, between 15 and 30. And I think what's important in that is, we're not just looking for any candidate, we're looking for the candidate that's the right for the board, for the district, and for the community. So that brochure with the qualities and the expectations of what you want, the experience and knowledge to be of the candidate, goes a long way in how we go out and seek applicants. We have a network of, we work with a lot of, we do a lot of training with assistant supes. We have a network of connections there for people who are ready, but I can tell you that you're a pretty attractive district that will probably attract several sitting superintendents. Some who are wanting to move districts, some who are wanting to move to a bigger district, perhaps. But I will tell you, you never know. You know, I could tell you, I've done several searches, and I've seen sitting supes lose out to assistant supes for the job. Why? Because of the way, what the board knows it needs in the fit and the knowledge and experience. So, yeah, the hard part really is calling down who you're going to interview, to be honest. And like Ruth said, you'll see all of that information long before we get there. And, you know, it's hard to say, okay, we're not going to interview 30 people, we're going to interview 10. That's a hard decision to me. Did I not answer your question, Mr. Edwards?
May I ask a follow-up question to that? I think one of the things that's really important for the community is that we are really intentional about sourcing the right candidates. So it could be that while, yes, this district is attractive, and you can throw up a landing page and have somebody apply and, you know, looking internally and whatnot, what's really important is sourcing for what the community is looking for. So thinking through diversity, equity, and inclusion, leading for, you know, looking at key attributes, and sometimes going after those candidates who may not have been thinking about making a move. But I really want to dive in on the sourcing component, because it's one thing to do a flyer and put up a website and then pass it through consulting networks. It's another to do strategic sourcing and really negotiating with other networks and candidates that you might, we might not have even considered, right? And that's what we're paying for the expertise for. And so I would want to know, how do you go through that process as opposed to just putting a flyer?
Well, process begins with the board. We sit there with the board, and we will ask you, what are the strengths of the district? Okay? What are the needs of the district? And what are the qualities you want in your next leader? And we don't just stop with your board. That begins the beginning of the brochure that we will start developing for you. But then we go out to your community, and we ask the same three questions. We ask that of your staff, we ask that of your parents, we ask that of any community members, organizations you want us to ask, and we bring back that information to you and make, you make a final decision about what that brochure is going to say, because that brochure drives what qualities people are going to look at and say, I'm a match for that? I'm not a match for that. Yes, we rely heavily on our network for recruitment, but we also are recruiting, we're also recruiting through the National Association of School Superintendents and doing a national advertisement as well. And we do a local, a state. We go through the, through AXA to also advertise. But really, to be honest, our network seems to be the most effective way to recruit quality candidates. It's who we know and who we have contact with and who gets recommended to us. But that doesn't mean we don't do the advertisements and all of the other work that has to take place for a full recruitment. I believe that as you start looking through the applications that come in, you yourself will be looking at them using the brochure and what you've shared with us as a gauge as to, wow, that person might be the right fit, that person might be the right fit. You know, like I said, you're going to, we're going to get between 15 and 30 applications, maybe more. And our job is to make sure it's a hard decision for you, because we want to make sure we have plenty of quality candidates. I will also tell you that we do a thorough research analysis of each candidate. When we get the application, we call all the references, we check all of their references, we check their school districts, we try to find out everything we can. We don't want happening here what happened back in the Midwest, you know, with a superintendent who wasn't qualified. We try to eliminate any little gaps or any missing information, or really filter through the things that don't make sense. There are times when people don't include things they should include in their applications. Yes, absolutely. Right at the, you have to come up to me.
What I believe I hear you saying is, are we going to be proactive as well as reactive in looking for candidates? There are any number of subgroups of people who want to be superintendent around California. There's any numbers of associations. We will be quite active in making sure that those associations are notified of this opening. And for people who might not have seen it before, they're going to see it through their own individual associations.
Thank you for your time. What was the most recent search that you led that you believe to be the most similar to Fullerton School District and why?
I think I'm going to hand that off to Ruth. You did the most recent.
The most recent search that I did was for Downey Unified School District. And I had two partners.
Sorry, just to clarify, not the most recent, but the most recent one that you believed to be the most similar to Fullerton School District?
The most similar to Fullerton? I would have to go back. I've only been with the company for two years, so I have a list. And do you want to take that?
Well, yes. The most similar to Fullerton School District? Well, the last Orange County school district was Placenta Yorba Linda, okay? I didn't do that search. One of our partners and a couple of our partners did that search. But that's the last Orange County school district. A K-8 district? I don't know if I can think of one that matches your, this district's demographics as you are expecting. But I could tell you, the Placenta Yorba Linda is a pretty similar district to you. Maybe not completely in socioeconomic dimensions, but as far as, you know, as the expectations of the county and so on. That was a search that took several weeks. Again, driven by the fact that the board and the community put out what they were looking for, they attracted several quality candidates. And, you know, I don't know exactly what you're looking for, if maybe you can give me a little, another idea of what exactly you're looking for?
No, that's fine. I just wanted your opinion on what you believe to be similar in terms of the challenges and demographics and how recent it was. That's, your answer's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
My question is, what makes your process different compared to the other firms that we are considering? I'm looking more for a specific example, if you can.
Well, I think what really, what my, in my experience has been is that involving your community in the process seems to be, to me, the magic glue that helps the search. When we get to hear, or when you get to hear from your staff, your parents, your community members, what they're also seeking for in the next leader, or what they want to see improved or maybe addressed, it really brings, it makes it a collective search. I actually feel like people have buy-in at that point, or they have part ownership of the process. I can't, I can't express to you strongly enough how important getting out into the community and conducting those forums is, in my opinion. And, you know, and providing the opportunity for everybody to contribute to the search process, I think makes a big difference. And we spend a lot of time on that. That recruitment period is a long period, and during that recruitment, that's when we're collecting more information. And I think in districts where we've done a very good job, and I think we did, I think I must have done 40 community forums in Pomona a year ago, or two years ago. And sometimes we did them because the district asked us for a specific group two or three times. I can tell you that that, those forums, I think, there made a real difference in what the board decided, and how the board decided to go in the selection on their superintendent. And I just think people need to be involved. People need to get their handprints on this search as well. I think, and not only does it help with the decision-making or the buy-in, it also creates a great landing for whoever this new superintendent's going to be. Because not only do we give that information to you, we give it to the new person you have. And there they have this wealth of information of what the expectations are of all of the groups in your district. And they come in now knowing what some of the expectations are. But more importantly, there's a sense that you have allowed the community and the parents to participate, and they feel heard, and they feel like they're part of the process. And that makes a big difference when you make the selection. And of course, the mentoring for the superintendent, which we provide at no additional cost.
I'm just struck by the unlimited focus groups. When you said 40, what do you think is typical, or especially our district is 11,000 students, like what, how many would you expect to do?
You know, I could say typical, but I don't think there is a typical. Sometimes we're asked to do 10, sometimes we're asked to do, you know, 40 sometimes. And we do the electronic one too, for people who can't come, can't participate. In Pomona, we had 4,000 people provide us an electronic response. So that was, that worked well there. I don't think we get that many in most districts. But getting out in the community is really, really, really important. As I say to them, I tell them, your board wants to hear from you. And that means a lot to them.
Just in your recognition of all kinds of things that were going on in the district earlier tonight, every one of those things is a focus group. And so when you begin to look around all of the incredible things that you say that Fullerton is doing and is doing, we didn't hear a tenth of them tonight. So you, as the board, will be deciding who the focus groups are, how many they are, how specific they are, whether they need to be repeated, and that is our pleasure to do that.
I have one more question. So seeing what you guys do, and you're out there a lot, what do you see as our strengths? And what is, what sets us apart from other school districts? So when you're recruiting, what makes our district stand out to be able to bring in the best person for us?
Well, first of all, you have a very stable history. You've had a superintendent involved for 13 years. That is very, very attractive, first of all. It speaks to continuity, it speaks to a mission, a shared vision and mission. That's a first, that's a first, okay? I think people will be watching your board meetings and looking at how you operate as a board. And people do make a decision on whether they will apply or not based on what they see. And based on tonight, I would say, you know, you have a very good governance team here. And that goes in your favor. Also, you know, you have a, I don't remember what the slide says exactly, but you have a slew of recognitions, which are all positive. I think anytime you highlight the positive, I think people recognize that good things are going on there. And everybody recognizes that good things don't happen by themselves. It's all the way from the board down to the school. That's where you get the synergy that happens. You're sound financially, you're diverse, you provide many unique programs. All of that speaks to your drive to meet the All of that speaks to your drive to meet the needs of kids.
What makes you different as a board? And I've told you how many districts I've worked with, is I haven't seen a board in a long time where everyone valued and found joy in differences and wanted to welcome as many people as you want to welcome in and protect as many people as you want to protect. That is incredibly unusual. So you don't need a superintendent who only knows. You need a superintendent who cares. That's very clear to me.
I also want to add, when I first knew that we were going to submit a proposal and just my search online, how much you value the arts. And that was loud and strong to me. And what you do with your communities. Yes, they're diverse. You have amazing, award-winning schools that are high in technology. But what I saw the value of was how students can learn so much more through music, dance, theater, and art. So I think I... and that's not typical. A lot has been lost over the years, but you have remained strong and it shows. So I applaud you for that.
Our next group? Thank you. While we're doing that, do we need a five-minute necessity break? Okay?
Please take your seats.
Okay, board members, come back, come back. Okay, Vanessa? Let's go. Okay, we're going to refocus, re-adjourn, come back. All right. On that note, we have our next group from Leadership Associates. Thank you, guys, for coming. And we'll do about 10 minutes for the presentation piece and then we'll follow it up with any questions our board has.
Great. Thank you very much for having us.
Absolutely.
But you all have just had a nice break at least, so that's good. Anyhow, Peggy Lynch with Leadership Associates. And thank you again for having us here to present. I'll spend a little bit on time on introductions. We have a PowerPoint, so... Okay, good. So Peggy Lynch, Leadership Associate. I spent seven years in the Brao Linda Unified School District, not far away. And I spent almost seven years in Santa Gita Union High School District as superintendent. And I was in 24 years in the Tustin Unified School District. So I started out as a teacher, middle school teacher, high school teacher, high school assistant principal, high school principal, and then assistant superintendent before I moved to Brea as superintendent. And I've been with Leadership Associates since 2009. I've probably done about 90 searches at least over the years with Leadership Associates. So I'll let David tell you a little bit about him.
Thank you, Peggy. David Verdugo, senior partner with Leadership Associates. I've been with Leadership Associates now for about seven years. I'm the retired superintendent of schools from Paramount Unified School District in Los Angeles County. I was the deputy superintendent in Placenta Yorba Linda for five of my 10 years there. I was also the interim superintendent in Pasadena, as well as Westminster. Following retirement, I was selected as the executive director of CALSA, the California Association of Latino Superintendents, out of Sacramento. And I also worked for ALAS as the Leadership Academy Director in Washington, D.C., where I mentored and coached aspiring superintendents throughout the nation. It's just been really special, having been in the field of education for about 47 years, former elementary principal as well, as well as a high school principal, where I attended school. If I may, for a quick moment, but nevertheless, I can remember becoming the principal of the school that I attended as a high school student and going to my chemistry teacher and saying, "Mrs. Osborne," because I needed some humility, "Mrs. Osborne, I want those lesson plans on my desk by Friday." She said, "Dr. Verdugo, I'll remind you that you got to see in my chemistry class." But thank you very much. But prior to going on to the next slide, if I may, for a moment, I did want to take the opportunity to mention to the board and the audience that we are the only silver affiliate connected to CSBA in terms of search firms. Thank you.
So the next thing is, this is kind of our... really an important slide. And so these people are our executive assistants. Linda Harder, who was the executive assistant in Fullerton High School District, and Penny Pyle, and Sarah Farrington... Serena Farrington. They are all former assistants, executive assistants to superintendents, and they've been through our search process. They are tremendous support to Ms. Sim, who I know and she's fabulous and organized, but this is a big process and hasn't been one through one, probably. So they're really great assistants. They provide a lot of feedback, a lot of materials for them, so they know how to post agendas, how to prepare for all the work that goes on during the search. Betty Hall is also one of our executive assistants, and she works with us mostly in our professional development work, which we do a lot of as Leadership Associates. So next slide, we've done over 750 searches. We've done Fullerton High School District. We've done Tustin, Brea, et cetera. We should have Laguna Beach on there. Those are pretty recent. Newport Mesa, Orange, and Irvine and Laguna are pretty recent searches that we've been doing and so been around doing those kinds of searches. I actually did Irvine and Orange, and David did Orange with me. And I did Laguna, so...
And did Fullerton as well.
Yeah. So that's kind of our little background on that. So we can go on. David?
Okay. And by the way, Brea is a unified school district. This next slide really represents what we believe is a very personalized process, search process, that I can't emphasize enough, starts and ends with the Board of Education. This is your search. And once we establish if we are selected, that initial meeting with the trustees is particularly critical as we begin to kind of move forward with respect to what you desire most in this process. But that is the first portion of that, at the very top, that brown-colored area. The next is to the right, where we follow direct meetings with the board, extensive interviews, online surveys, and a variety of languages are available, very personalized. We realize that this board wants us to make sure that we are reaching out to all stakeholders. That input is particularly critical as we not only ask stakeholders what you desire most in the next superintendent, but also what are the strengths of the district and what might be some of the challenges. That gets put into a position description, which we begin to utilize in our recruitment and in our outreach process by our vetting, which is extremely comprehensive in terms of making sure that we are bringing to you the best match and fit according to the position description that you've described for us and the stakeholders as well. We also provide not only that position description, but an executive summary. It would be similar to perhaps an accreditation report, if you will, at the high school level. With all that information, every stakeholder's input that you're able to see and digest a little bit, it's a great tool for the roadmap, if you will, with your next superintendent to work together and collaboratively as you move forward. We provide, again, the broadest number of candidates and applicants that are the best match and fit. The board will see all applications. In a read-only process, you will see all applications. We will bring forward what we call tiers. Tier one being the best match and fit. Tier two being outstanding individuals, but nevertheless, don't quite meet the match and fit that you are looking for and requiring and requesting. And in terms of the interview process, we are there to help as well, help facilitate that process. And again, as Peggy mentioned, helping Ann and/or Mike, as well as your technology department as well. Oh, okay. Pardon me. Just in terms of emphasizing or re-emphasizing that a community engagement, stakeholder input sessions in person, on Zoom, virtually, or online, we are available. I happen to live in the city of La Habra. I've been a resident there for 45 years, so proximity is not a problem whatsoever. Spanish-speaking consultant. I am a Spanish-speaking... my mother was an immigrant from a little pueblo, se llama Cuatemoc, in the state of Chihuahua, Mexico. Again, online survey in multiple languages. Input informs the position description, executive summary, as I mentioned previously, as well. We love working with the D-LAC meetings. They feed us so well typically. I was at a D-LAC meeting not too long ago, and finally, one of the members of the D-LAC said, "Dr. Verdugo..." "Sabes que doctor, queremos alguien guapo y joven." They just wanted somebody young and handsome. Okay. Going on to this next slide, if I may. Thank you, Ann. This is really... displays our Leadership Associate partners. I want to emphasize partners, not consultants. We are vested in this company and in this organization. And every... twice a month, we meet as an entire group via Zoom, where we discuss those searches that we are involved with. So the recruitment, the placement, the process regarding any discussions, references. So really, you have not only Peggy and I, but you have this entire group of individuals as well. Next slide, if I may, Ann. Thank you. Recruitment strategy, we have a state and national reach, actually internationally. We just hired somebody from Toronto, as a matter of fact, in one of our searches. So there is a national reach there, but we are California-savvy, and I think that's particularly important. Most of these organizations that you see on the screen there have depended on Leadership Associates in the selection of their executive directors or their CEOs. And that network of organizations really provides tremendous connections as it relates to recruitment processes. Peggy?
So the other part I want to talk about in some of those recruitment strategies we have, because we also do a lot of professional development work. So, for example, David and I are both members of Southern California superintendents, but we also connect with the Northern California superintendents group as well. There's on... if you look at that slide, on the right side, the superintendent's leadership networks, we have 48, 45 districts across the state. I happen to do one in the Central Coast and have 10 members in that group. I've been doing it for eight or nine years now. So we are connected with different ways of getting that. I'm currently doing an aspiring superintendent series. It's my second year doing that in Orange County. But we have people from San Diego, Riverside, Orange County, all attending that session. So it's another way of knowing what the talent pool is out there, who's looking, what are they interested in? Could they be a good match for a certain district? You know, every time... when I first went out to become a superintendent, and I didn't get the first job, by the way, for sure, and somebody said, "But it's always going to be the right match. It's going to be that one." And when I went into Brea, I remember thinking, "That's the right place for me." And I think there is a certain thing that happens about making that match and making sure that it's the right person. So we, you know, really spend a lot of time. We do advisement for 27 districts. We do a leadership series for 200-plus superintendents. We also have an assistant superintendent of HR network we've done. So we have a lot of ways of reaching out. And we have an annual summer institute that's assistant superintents and superintendents every year. So a lot of ways that we have of really knowing who's out there and knowing what the talent pool is. We have, and I'm just going to be very clear because somebody may ask this, some people say we have a... what do they call it? Stable. We don't have a stable. We like good people all over, and we really are looking for people that just are the right place and the right person at the time. Background checks. We spend a lot of time on this. This is clearly a critical part of our work. We don't... is clearly a critical part of our work. We don't want you to be surprised. We don't want to be surprised. So, we really spend a lot of time really knowing. And we never pay attention to just what's on the paper. You know, they can, lots of people give nice references. I've rarely ever had a person give a reference where you called and they said, "Why would they give me? I don't like them." But occasionally, that's happened. But usually, they're going to give the people that will say good things, right? So, our job is to find those other people. And that's part of the advantage of our partnership, because we have these people all over the state who are both do searches, but also are doing professional development with us, who can say, "Hey, don't look at that one. There's a problem. Here's what happened. They got fired. It's not public yet, but they're not going to be back." So, there's ways for us to really do it. And we just want to know, I mean, we want you to know that you're going to get somebody who's been certainly vetted. We know what happened in Iowa this year. That wasn't good. We don't want to get caught in any of those kinds of things, and we're very careful about that. As David said, you do read all application materials. You don't get just the ones we think you ought to look at. That's not part of our work. We have this, we developed some evaluation criteria based on the input. That online survey, when you get done, the executive summary, all the online survey and all the input from all those sessions. Now, it's pretty voluminous, and there's going to be a lot of reading to do, but it is really like understanding what your community and your staff are saying about the district. That's a lot, but we think that's very important. We also give that, all that input, my, we also give all that input to the candidate who's selected. Was that a time limit, or was I? Okay, thank you. Okay. The last thing is just your search timeline. That's a draft. You can, we work with you. David, last.
Yeah, and I think the final aspect of this is that one slide that says, "Why us?" You can certainly read that, but I'll just highlight some things there, and that is the broadest and deepest pool of applicants or candidates. We have 1,500, over 1,500 subscribers to Leadership Associates on our website that instantly get notified of any openings that might be taking place. We have 66% of our finalists, by the way, have been women or candidates of color. We're California-based, as I mentioned, California savvy. We have a vested interest in your success. We remain active in California public education. Over 85% of the superintendents that we've selected or have been selected have remained in the position for five or more years. It's competitive, reasonable, our cost is all-inclusive, and it does have a two-year guarantee, as a matter of fact. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you. We probably do have some questions. I think we'll start with James this time.
So, it looks like you have a lot of extensive in the local area, in Orange County. Some of the examples that you provided were Unified School Districts. What do you think is unique about a search for K-8?
Well, I've done all kinds of districts, K-6, K-8, and Unified. I think really, for us, it's really about making sure the person has the kind of experience that you're really looking for. So, even though, for example, I only had high school background as an administrator and as a teacher, when I became an Assistant Superintendent, I was K-12 at services. So, I think we're really looking for what the match is. I think the difference is, some people don't have a high school background, and they don't want to be in a high school district. They want a K-8 district, because they know that better. So, it's really up for us to find what you're looking for, I think.
And if I may add, the articulation between your feeder districts, and that being obviously Fullerton Joint Union High School District, is particularly important. You're starting the journey at the K-8 or K-6 school districts that I've been associated with previously. And so, that funnel is particularly important, and that articulation is really critical, in my opinion.
Yeah, I wanted to ask you, in your information that you shared with us, you said there would be, I think, two community, or a couple of community forums and stakeholder input. Could you tell us a little bit more about what that usually looks like? What would be kind of a typical number that you would do of interviews or focus groups? And if we say, "No, but we want one more. We want one more," how do we make sure we're getting what we need and for the price that we've agreed upon?
Sure. So, the first meeting that we have with the Board is really to outline all of that. So, we typically do one or two community forums, depending on the districts. If, and it'll be, for example, it could be, it's often in a school library, or a school multipurpose room, or whatever you might have, where we would hold an open forum for anybody who wants to come. So, that's the community forums. Sometimes we do two. Mostly, honestly, over the last maybe eight years, we have found, a lot of people don't come to them, because they have the online survey, and they have an opportunity to do that. I've always found that sometimes there are groups that want an in-person meeting, but some groups don't care. They just soon do a Zoom or a phone call. So, we work with you on exactly who you want us to talk to and how many we do that.
But if we want, I mean, if we wanted classified staff and
Oh, yeah.
Different particular groups within the parent communities, community leaders, you would go after those things?
Between the two of us, we probably do 25 groups?
25 to 30 groups.
Focus group.
Particularly critical. But we do provide what I'm going to call a template, examples of stakeholder input groups. So, it could be your city manager. It could be your police department. It could be your city councilman. It could be your previous superintendent. It really gets added, if you will, to that template or that list that we provide you. So, it's a real good catalyst for what you might be considering you're thinking about with regards to that.
And you get that list in the first meeting to help us think about it. A lot of times, people, we always meet with principals. We always meet with union leadership. We always meet with the cabinet people, district office, classified staff, you know, all those different groups that are internal. But we also want to know who's your external group, whether it's Rotary, whether it's Chamber of Commerce, any of those kinds.
And lastly, if I may, I apologize. If the district has a specific arena or area that's particularly important, maybe your Spanish-speaking population lives in a particular zone or geographic area, we want to make sure that we are available for them, as well as any other areas that you folks might feel it's important for us to touch base with.
Thank you. Now, you mentioned that you're a CSBA affiliate, and you are California-based, but my question is, what makes the process of looking for a superintendent unique to you and your firm? Can you give me any, a specific example, not necessarily a statement, but an example?
Well, I think it's what we believe in. It's our whys, if you will. I can answer it that way for a moment. We remain active in California education. We believe that a high-quality education for your staff, for your students, for your community, is really the foundation of a democratic society. That's why we call ourselves partners and not consultants. And that's, of course, why we are so savvy with regards to that. It has a huge impact, that leadership, as Dr. Pletka has over the many years. But more than that, every student, every staff member, they deserve a passionate leader. And we believe that we bring that forward, who is focused on ensuring the highest education opportunity available for students in this community and in this district. And that really is everyone who's associated with you folks. Our CSBA affiliation was very purposeful. We wanted to make sure that we are hearing from them as well as Board members. In fact, two of our search consultants are Board members currently, one in Santa Barbara, and one at the county level in El Dorado, up in Northern California. And of course, what we value, I would add, if I may, Mrs. Estrella, would be our integrity, our equity, the diversity, the inclusion, the accountability, and perhaps maybe more important, the transparency.
I think the other thing is, we have a long history, and we've been very successful. And that's really, we really work at our process. Every, every time we meet, we meet twice a year as a whole partnership, and we really talk about, "How can we do this better? How can we always continue to grow and learn?" And really are literally partners, you know, financial partner, we are partners. And so, we are dependent on each other and invested in this company to make it successful. The founding trio, basically, actually, there's four of them, that went started, started because they were all retiring from superintendents, and they wanted to have a little fun. But they really wanted to be sure every school district got a great leader. That was really the, and I know them. I knew all of them. And they really, that's their founding basis.
I think the two metrics that you mentioned, having 66% of finalists being women or candidates of color, and 85% of your placement rate staying for five or more years, do you attribute that success to the Leadership Academy? I know you all say, you made a comment, you know, you have a stable, right? You don't have a stable. But do you think that your Leadership Academy and your pipeline there, you know these candidates over the years. You've built relationships with them over the years. So, is that a recipe of success for your firm? Because many of them are going to say, "Okay, after, you know, within two years, if someone leaves, we're going to help you run another search," and then we're back at square one again. It seems that you all are doing talent development. You're doing nurturing. You're doing advocacy. So, you're very involved in the educational ecosystem. And I just want to know how you all are getting to those metrics, and, you know, just kind of almost a little bit of the secret sauce of the trade and the recruitment strategy.
That's a very good question. I guess one of the things I would say to you is, one of the things I've heard over, and I've been with the firm a long time, has been that the candidates like being a candidate in our search, that they really feel that we work for the Board. Clearly, we would have a contract with the Board. You know, you pay us. They don't pay us, you know. But they feel well-treated. They feel respected. We try to, you know, and I think all of us in education, hopefully all know, that 90% of this, probably more, is relationships, right? Building relationships, getting to know who people are, letting and understanding where they come from. I've had people that I know personally who applied for jobs, and I've said to them, "This isn't a good match for you," you know. And I want to be honest about it, because I, it's a lot of work to apply. Takes a lot of work. Takes a lot of preparation. And if you're never going to get the job, because you're not a good match, it's better to say to them, "I don't think I'd spend the time on this one." If you want to apply, you can apply, but it may not be a good match. I had a guy who I knew personally, who applied for a job where they were very clear to me. They said, "The person must be a high school principal." This person did not have high school background at all. I could have saved him a lot of time, but he would never, he never called me, asked me. We really work with them to understand the process and what's going to go on. But we, I think relationships are really what it's about. And we've had a lot, luckily, we've had a lot of years, and I think that's been part of our success.
And if I may, I think that success extends to the relationship that we build with the Boards that we work with. We are very often called up after five, six, seven years. Those five years that we mentioned, in terms of that 85% value, is as a result of us staying with them as well, in terms of being a thought partner, perhaps, or perhaps even a coach or advisor of sorts. But we make sure that we want to stay in contact with them accordingly. I did the Fullerton Joint Union High School search, and we're always in contact with Dr. McLaughlin, for example. Brea search, same thing. I just finished quite a few searches. Elk Grove, the fourth-largest school district in the state of California, and we are remaining in contact with them accordingly. So, I think it's the relationship that we build with the Boards as well.
I think I've done a couple districts where I've done them four times now, over a lot of years. And so, it's like they just sort of call you and they want you back, because they, we've been successful with them. And it is the follow-up.
Knowing our district and knowing other districts have, as you've been going through your searches, and if you were to do our search, when you're looking at what makes us strong, what do you think makes our district stand out to other districts? Why would someone come work with us as opposed to somebody else? What do you think we do well?
I'm sure Peggy has her opinion as well, but what I was going to start out with is that we have already received calls. We haven't been selected as your search firm, but we have already received calls of interest, if you will, if you happen to obtain or receive that. I think it goes back to your attributes, whether or not it is the programs and the projects that you've started, your speech and debate program, any number of things that are available to you. I understand your students built a home, that type of stuff, two homes, okay, stands out quite, quite a bit. Your academic excellence, your Blue Ribbon Schools, your distinguished schools, your Golden Bell Awards. People know that. And what has happened here over the last five to 10 years has been quite incredible. And I think people have understood that they are going to sit on the shoulders, or stand on the shoulders, I should say, of what you folks have done as trustees, and certainly of what Dr. Pletka has done. But I think that there's a lot of aspects to that. Your reputation, I think it's, if I'm not mistaken, reader's choice, best in Orange County. That says a lot, so.
I think the other thing that would be, you know, I don't, for example, there are districts where you think candidate pool might not be as great as you'd want it to be. I would not worry about your candidate pool. This will be a good pool. But part of it also is your stability. You know, the fact that Dr. Pletka was here that many years is a testament to staying with where you're headed, to really focusing on what's important for the community. And that's a, that's a big deal. That's not true everywhere. Sadly, not true everywhere, but it's not. And so, I think there's an attractiveness to that.
Any other questions from our Board? No? Okay. Well, thank you so much for being here tonight. Thank you for sitting through and waiting for us. And we will, we'll call you, right? We'll let you know. So, you guys can either
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
You guys are welcome to enjoy the rest of your evening, but we really appreciate all that you do, all that you've always done, and in caring for our school districts across the state.
Special thanks to Mike McAdam.
Mm-hmm.
And to Anna.
Thank you. Thank you.
Back to Sylvia.
We'll be ready for the next group. Stretch. What is it, seventh inning stretch?
We're not there yet, Beth. We've got a lot more to go.
It's the second inning stretch. We're not ready for taking me out to the ballgame. Sorry.
It was about time. If we had gotten
It's going to be like that one Dutch playoff game, 18 innings.
I have faith.
Be safe.
Second inning.
I don't know.
Okay. Thank you, guys, for being so patient in
Of course.
in that small little room. And I'm sure you guys got to know each other way better.
We all know each other very well already.
Thank you. Thank you for being patient and welcome. And we're so happy you're from ESS, right?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, President Berryman, and members of the Board. And we appreciate this opportunity to be here this evening and talk about our qualifications to help you with your superintendent search. I am Suzette Lovely. I'm the Managing Director of Education Support Services Group, but more importantly, a lifelong educator. And joining me are Dr. Stephen Keller and Dr. Lillian Maldonado-French. They'll tell them a little bit about themselves when they come up for their part. But one thing I wanted to point out for everybody, Dr. Keller just spread his wings and grew his wings right here in Fullerton. He's a former principal of Nicholas Junior High School, back in the day, right, Dr. Keller? You have our bios in your packet, so we're not going to go into all the detail about all of our work history. Just wanted to mention, for me specifically, though I've spent the bulk of my career here in Orange County, two and a half decades working in Capistrano Unified, 27 years I was there, and then three years working right next door in Placentor Belinda. And then I retired as superintendent in Carlsbad, and since that time, I've just been supporting the work of schools, school boards, and doing superintendent searches across our region here and beyond. And the faces that you see, oops, sorry about this. There we go. There we are. The faces that you see on the border of this slide represent the 30-plus ESS consultants that work with us across California that bring deep experience. So, some of these consultants, if we are selected, would also help us with making sure that we have a good candidate reach and a candidate pool. Our strategic partnership as well is with AALR, which is a respected law firm in California. And we are an affiliate of the firm. We do everything separately, but we coordinate and collaborate with them for some of our services, our website services and such. And so, we also have access to lawyers for us personally, if we need to get some legal advice. It's not charged to the client. But it also provides school board members an opportunity for non-legal support. So, when the Boards need Board governance, and you don't need an attorney to do that, that's the work we do, and that's our affiliation with the law firm. You've heard from two other great firms. We all know each other. We have been doing searches concurrently in many districts, again, here in Orange County and beyond. So, you've heard a lot of the same things. What I want to do, what we want to do, and our team wants to do, is just share with you what is different about ESS. So, what you our team wants to do is just share with you what is different about ESS. So what, you have our proposal in front of you, you've all read it. We don't want to be redundant there, but we just want to highlight some of the points that focus on our commitment and our proven results. And again, how we're different, what separates us from the other firms. We really consider us a concierge-level service and attention. We intentionally limit the number of searches that we do each year to about five to 10. You can see all the searches we've done in your packet. And we don't put in proposals for every search. We're selective as well about where we want to work. We want to work with school boards and communities where we think we can be a value add. We have a strong statewide presence. However, our search platform does extend nationally. We know in your RFP, it said a statewide search. We're not sure if the board, you know, would want beyond that, but we have the capacity to do that. And our focus is also to ensure that Fullerton School District selected candidate serves your students in your community for a long time. That's really, really important to us. So to that end, we are the only firm, and we know because we track other firms' data, that actually produces our hire and retention data. And in your packet, you can see all the superintendent searches we've done, who's been hired over the last six or seven years, and how long they've stayed. And so we're really proud, and it's on page 10 of your packet, we're really proud that 94% of our placements have successfully continued in their role, at least for five years or more. Now, some have just been hired recently, but that's our pretty consistent track record. That's really important to you. You haven't had a new superintendent for a while, and that's a, that's a good place to be in. And so you want to continue that pattern. We don't maintain a standing roster of candidates. So in other words, we did a search over here, so we're going to bring Fullerton, the same candidates over here, because your district is unique and you're going to be looking for something different. So every search, we start fresh. We build entirely, we build it around the unique needs and the vision of the district that we're serving. Another element that we want to point out as a differentiator is we conduct very rigorous background checks to guarantee the integrity of the process and to ensure the candidates have been fully vetted before they come to you, the board, and you make your final selection. Trustees may or may not be aware, because this did make national news, but recent headlines involving the Des Moines School District, and this is within the last month, raise public concerns about the integrity of the background checks that were conducted by the search firm there and subsequently the third-party company that they use to do the background checks. And there's some litigation involving that. And so we want to share with the board what we do before any candidate is presented for a board interview. We use a third-party, they're called Nation Search, they're out of Colorado, they're amazing, and they conduct a comprehensive 15-year background check on every candidate that you invite for an interview, which includes social security, and address tracing, county, state, federal, criminal, and multi-jurisdictional search, a DMV search, an education verification, and bankruptcies. And we also then engage a third-party, a separate third-party, to conduct a thorough digital media and social media review, and we collect data on that. And we really have a philosophy. Board members, you don't want a surprise. Nobody wants a surprise party. We don't, and you certainly don't. And so we're really proud of that, and we believe that we are the only search firm that does that. And that's included in the cost of the search. And finally, we're your board ambassadors. So throughout the process, we're representing you at the focus groups, when we're meeting with your community, your city representatives. We're the face of the district for this process. And so all of those engagements with your employees, your associations, are conducted with respect, responsiveness, and professionalism. And so really, we think there's nothing better than a testimonial. So this is from a recent search we did in Lawndale School District up in LA County. But this board president and trustee talked about how we provided proactive and responsive guidance along every step of the journey, and we delivered on the promise of the concierge-level service. And as evidenced, the board continues to engage our search advisors that did that search and use those individuals to facilitate the evaluation process. So in closing for my section, we like graphics and we like stories. And so the best way we think to distinguish what sets ESS apart is to consider two great companies, Trader Joe's and Costco. We've probably all shopped at both. They're highly successful at what they do. They offer good deals, and they have loyal followings, but they serve different purposes. So when we're at Costco, a Costco customer, we come for the prices, the fewer product options, and the ability to buy in bulk. The shopping experience there is standardized, and it's designed for scale. And if you're trying to get in your steps, you have 145,000 square feet to meander around, right? And the Trader Joe's, on the other hand, the customers come for the novel choices. We love going to Trader Joe's and seeing what's new there. It's a less stressful environment. And employees share what's new. They tell us what's great, what might fit your taste. And many employees, if you're a regular at your local Trader Joe's, they know your name. So we like to know everybody's name as well that we engage with and get to know. And so we consider ESS the Trader Joe's of search firms. The clients love our responsiveness, our curated options, and our, and the customized experience they get. And of course, no membership is required. So we, like Trader Joe's, are selective about what we take on, not because we want to do less, but just because we want to do better. So that's what distinguishes us. And I'm going to turn it over now to my colleague, Stephen Keller, who'll tell you a little bit more about himself. And he's going to talk about the steps in the search itself. And let me move my things. Dr. Keller?
Thank you. And I'll be going rather quickly, just to respect your time. And my eyesight's a little wiggly here, so I'm going to go over here. First of all, Stephen Keller retired superintendent, superintendent of the Redondo Beach Unified School District for 16 and a half years. So longevity is part of my DNA. I retired three years ago, been working with ESS, and most recently conducted the searches in Riverside, got to work with Lillian, and South Pasadena. That's two I've done this year. And the search activities we embrace, we call it the East Process, EAST. You can follow that engagement, board planning workshop. If we're the lucky enough group to be partnering with you, first thing we would do in January is meet with you and get you search-ready as a board. We go through all the details, closed session, open session, details that are appropriate. And really, it's just a readiness factor and really starting the new year that way. Education partner input, Lillian's going to talk about that. Please don't think I'm glossing over it. It needs a little more detail. She will share more. But basically, from the education partner input, including an online survey, what we do is we create a leadership profile. And that leadership profile is probably one of the most important documents that will serve you. Three things. One, it helps us filter candidates to be a match for your school district. Two, it really does shine a light and mirrors kind of what your community voices are saying they would like in a superintendent. And three, it's a great starting point for your new superintendent, and gives you a starting point for us to work with that incoming person. Of course, we do a compensation study, like districts surrounding districts, to provide you objective and up-to-date data, as you know, sometimes super contracts are tricky to follow. A, in East is activation process. We do the posting like all of the search consultants do. We put them in the places where we know people look for these jobs. Candidate outreach, we're already getting called for your job. This is a job people want. Let me say that again. I know we all have our little microscope sometimes on some of the unpleasant things that may happen, but this is a coveted district. So be very excited to know people are already knocking on your door and wanting this job. Applicant screening, we do formal reference checks like everybody, but where our money is at is the blind appraisals. Between Lillian, 17-year superintendent, she'll talk a little bit more in a moment, recency, she was a superintendent, retired about the same time I did. Between the two of us and our longevity, we know a lot of people that claim to do the work and actually do do the work. So we have our own backdoor appraisals to do, to conduct on people. And then, of course, Suzette, who has done approximately 30 searches, she has her connection. So we know how to backdoor find information on people as well as anybody. Third-party analysis of social media footprint, that's a big thing, obviously. Wasn't as big of a deal during, when I started back in the day, but obviously something significant today. We're rolling, we're rolling. Selection, yes. Determined candidate slate, we put them in tiers. Tier one, tier two, tier three. Tier one, they aligned in leadership perfectly, leadership profile. Their reference checks are impeccable. Tier two, maybe close to impeccable, and leadership profile, pretty solid. And then tier three would be everyone else. You get to pick who you're going to interview. We don't. You do that, whether it's tier one, tier two, or tier three. The Nation Search, Suzette covered pretty thoroughly during the interviews, first-round interviews. Again, you pick the candidates. The questions are based on your, on your leadership profile. Second round interview, or the finalist, or finalist, plural, depending on what you, who you would like to invite back, the questions are based on your first-round interviews. If you would like, we do a validation visit to the location of this new person. Going back one bullet, the employment contract, we work with you, your attorney, your district's attorney that you use, and the board to ensure the candidate is, all the stars aligned for the new contract. The T, oh, the board approval for the preferred candidate, for the preferred candidate at a regularly scheduled board meeting, it's in our proposal. I believe it's sometime in April, April 14th, or somewhere around there. And then the T for East is transition phase, which is a workshop with the board and the new superintendent, focused on the leadership profile. And then, obviously, for the first year, we are a thought partner for this new person. That's the East. And what candidates say, and what all people applying for this job will say, ESS proactively communicates, cares, and really did put us through a rigorous, but honest and professional process. I'll turn it over to Lillian. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Lillian Maldonado-French, recently retired. And I was a superintendent for 17 years in two different school districts, and additionally, spent 19 years in Santa Ana Unified, just down the freeway. So I know the community well. In ESS, we strongly believe in the importance of giving voice to your community partners. So we conduct an extensive community engagement process. We begin with interviews, as you see. We conduct group and individual interviews determined by you at your initial planning session. First, with each board member, then with your labor partners, admin team, parent groups, city leaders, foundation leaders, perhaps. You tell us who you want us to interview. The meetings can be held virtually, in person, or by phone, depending on the group and depending on your preference. We also facilitate a community forum that's open to everyone in the community, anyone who wants to attend and wants to participate in the process. That is, we do two forums, one in person and one online, to make sure we have access to everyone. And at the same time that this is all going on, you can see up there, we conduct the, an online survey. And for us, it's truly important that survey reach a very broad audience, but also be quick and easy to take. We have a sample survey in your packet, but please know that the board is welcome to make changes and it should be customized for your needs. Now, we take all this information and we synthesize it together, and we create, as Stephen mentioned, the leadership profile report. And we publish that, and we make sure that that's available to all the candidates as well. That's very important, so that you have an opportunity to make sure there's a good match, and they do as well. And throughout this process, we focus really on three questions. We want to know from all the stakeholders, what are the district's strengths? What makes Fullerton stand out? We also want to know what are the challenges that are facing the district in the years ahead? And then, most importantly, what are the most important qualities or characteristics for Fullerton's next superintendent in order for them to be successful? So that's the process. Invite the team to come on up?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's one more slide?
No, it's just-
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So do we have questions? We could start over here now. We'll start on this end this time.
I think many of the firms have similar, you know, offerings. And you mentioned that you all are very strategic in terms of who you take on as clients. One of the things that I'm thinking about is, of course, the return on investment for the community and then the cost of retaining a firm to be able to do these activities. So what are some of your talking points around the price point for your services? And, you know, you all are the AMEX of the AMEX Platinum Card of recruitment firms, I'm very aware. And so I just would want to know the return on investment for the community. And, you know, again, we want to be able to do our due diligence around what the taxpayer is going to be funding.
One of the biggest costs in there, and again, this is the differentiator, is for that Nation Search background check. It's about $250 per candidate. So if you interview five, multiply that. If you interview six. And we would suggest, again, in light of that recent case, we, boards would just, we used to just do that on the finalists. So you were only paying for that for one candidate. But we believe, you owe it to your community and your taxpayers also to make sure that you're not doing another search in six months because maybe the right person wasn't hired. So that's a big, a big cost of that. We also have three of us. We offer two community forums. We have a lot of really hands-on work with your administrative assistant. We, we try to do as much of the work as we possibly can, but we know that your administrative assistant has to help send things out. The survey has to come from someone in your district. But we create all the materials ourselves. We will work with your translators, depending on what languages you want. It will translate the survey, but sometimes your translators have different translations that they like to use. So those are things that we believe are the value add as well.
So one of the things I love is that you do offer that concierge personal service, but kind of following up with what trustee Alvarez just said, could you give me another example? I know you said the background checks is one of the reasons why it's a little bit more expensive. But can you give us an example of what makes your process of finding a superintendent worth the price difference?
Well, one thing that we haven't mentioned is how much we focus on making sure that we have a wide variety and diversity of candidates. We think that's very important. If you look at our candidate searches, I believe it's in the 50th percentile for diverse candidates. And then if you count women, it's 75%, I believe.
Seventy, yeah.
79%. So one thing that we spend a lot of time is focusing on getting the right potential candidates for you. And so that takes a little bit of extra work, but it's worth it because we want you to have as wide a possible a net to, out there to make sure that you have the best possible candidates to consider.
One of the other things that we do, which is not the cost to the district, because we have access to the attorneys, we get all the language for the board agenda item written. We won't help, you will pick which attorney you want to work with for the employment contract. But if there's a legal question, we've had some questions that have come up for community forums or things like that, we will call our lawyer and get the answer on your legal bill. So that's another value add, that we have used that regularly for many of our searches, especially depending on the community. But, you know, there's been one incident where people wanted to film one of the forums, and other members of the forum were opposed to that. So we had to have our attorney write something, and that would have been $500 or $1,000 or whatever it would have cost for your attorney to do it. So that also is part of it.
Can you tell us about one of your recent searches that you believe most matches or is similar to Fullerton School District and why?
I mean, you have, yeah, every community's unique, so there's no one size. So I have to be very careful here. But I would say there are some similarities with South Pasadena. I've done a few smaller school district, medium-sized school districts, diverse populations, and I know this community relatively well. And that being said, superintendent who is now leading that school district, Dr. Baxter, fabulous, fabulous, I don't know necessarily if she'd be a great match for here. And that's my point, is although it's, there are certainly some similarities, the uniqueness of this community just makes it its own special location and context. And so I would say for me, the closest piece, but I still, I don't know if anybody in that candidate pool would necessarily be a match, that actually interviewed, would necessarily be a match for Fullerton, because it's just so unique. And being as unique as it is when we do this leadership profile, which I would argue is a lot of time, and we take this very seriously, and we spend a lot of time on that, personal time during our work here, I really think that's going to provide us and you some new information. Quite frankly, you didn't know about your own community. There's always nuances in this leadership profile that will surprise board members. And it surprises us, because we think we know a bit, or a thing or two about Fullerton. So not to duck your question, but I think it's a fair, I just want you to understand, I think that's about as fair as I can be. I think that's about as fair as I can be with that.
And I would say probably, it's, it's hard whether you're, you see, we've done some K6s, you're a K8. Menifee is similar, similar in size. It's out in Riverside County. It's a growing community, not as established community in as Fullerton is, but that superintendent, and she's still there, she was hired in 2020, right during the pandemic, actually. And so I would say there's similarities there. Huntington Beach City School District, again, you're larger. There's not anybody in Orange, I know all the 28 districts in Orange County, and there's not very many of the elementary districts or the TK8 districts that have 11,000 students. They have 6,000 students. So Anaheim Elementary, we did that, similar in size, they're TK6, but demographically you're different. So those would be the two, probably Menifee and, and maybe Huntington Beach, similar.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask about numbers. Could you give us an idea of how many applicants you typically have for a search like ours? And then as far as the focus groups and discussions and interviews, I know you said two community forums that are open, but what's like a typical number that you would say when you go to, obviously with our leadership direction, but what would you expect to do as far as interviews with our associations, our community members to get to that?
And we work with associations if they want us to meet with the whole E-Board or they want us just to meet with the union presidents. But typically in those focus groups, which you will identify for us, they are probably 15 to 20 focus group, you know, and, and then the amount of people that come is dependent on the who's invited. So it's at least 15 to 20 focus groups. We meet with the city manager, though, the, you're unique here because you do have your own fire and police services. We offer that, we'll get on a Zoom with them. We just did that in Carlsbad. We had the city manager, the fire chief, and the police chief, all separate meetings. And I know many of the other firms don't reach out to the community. We also look at your nonprofits and we'll do those one-on-one or at their convenience, your foundation board, obviously. So that's, that could end up being a few hundred people in, based on the group size. And because we're accommodating, we try to say to your administrative assistant, when is the next PTA meeting? Can we come to that? So your PTA presidents aren't coming separately. Is there a foundation meeting coming? When are the associations meeting? And so that's also unique in what we do. We have one-on-ones with each of you as trustees, and then we offer those two community forums. We do the virtual one because some people have said a lot of, and that's another added cost because that's a second night, maybe only five people show up, but they can't come in person. So we have that virtually with translation and it, I imagine here, it'll be somewhere in the 300 to 400 range of people. Here's the thing, when you're a great district and things are going well, don't take it personally, but many people don't show up because they trust you. So don't think that that's, yes, negative.
I just want to add that beyond the PTA and groups, we also make sure that we're focusing on other parent groups, for example, the D-LAC, we mentioned, or if you have a special education parent group, if you have other kinds of affiliation groups. So we, we go far and wide. And, you know, typically in, in high school districts, we, we meet with students, but if you have a student group that you want us to meet with, we'll be happy to do that as well.
And as far as applicants, I think one question we have is, is your proactive ability to reach applicants rather than just posting, but how do you go after, like, what is, what would you typically say is the number of applicants first, like ours?
First, I would back into this and say, you know, I've, I've seen a search where we've had 15 and, you know, 10 of them are superstars. And as we say in the business, you really need one. But you can, you can, I'll let you answer the question about how many applicants you think we'll get. But I think what brings us here, as the three of us specifically for this job, is our recency of being superintendent and long-serving superintendents and working in Orange and LA County as we have, really is an access to kind of that next generation coming in, assistant soups in particular, sometimes superintendents. But we're connected to a lot of these people. So the only thing I want to be clear about is we first want to develop that leadership profile to really describe who we're looking for, because that will share with us, who we know and are that we worked, you know, either in a neighboring district or side-by-side with. And then you have Suzette here, who's seen plenty of people in searches who've been awesome, but maybe they just weren't a match for that specific context. And so for us, I think that's the piece that really solidifies our ability to do this work is because we're connected to so many people and we're connected to so many people that we know authentically what their, you know, their, their, their skill set is and what their skill set is not. And I think that will give us a more honest appraisal for, for this group coming in as to the number.
The, the two most recent searches I did, Solana Beach and Carlsbad last year, you did Riverside, a bigger district, but it's about 25 candidates, maybe, you know, if you want a national search, it would be more. But again, it's not the number, it's the caliber. And so we'd rather have 20 fabulous folks for you to, to choose from. Fewer people, you know this, you read the newspapers. It's a politically charged job these days for school boards, of course, and for superintendents. And so it isn't as desirable for some folks. Some folks that are assistant soup say, I'm just happy here. So doesn't mean you're not a great district, but this will attract, because you're not a high, you know, you're not K-12, a lot of people say, oh, I don't have to deal with high school. So that, we, we feel confident that you'll get, it'll be in the 20s, you know, a couple dozen, maybe, maybe 30.
So as you talk about recruiting and how many people we get, what makes our district a very strong district in being able to recruit the best candidates?
No, I would, yeah, a long time ago, but I would tell you the few things that I know about this, parent engagement, you hustle to engage your parents and I, and they show up and they feel genuinely appreciated on your campuses. That doesn't happen everywhere. I'd say that you're an award-winning, many times over, school district. You're a newer, but a highly competent board. I think Dr. Bob has done fabulous work. And so you're not walking into, excuse the expression, a hot mess. So you're, you're kind of taking it to the next level. So for someone like us that are maybe secure in our position, that's going to excite us for, especially a sitting soup. If I'm an assistant soup, I'm going to tell you what I like about it is you're a forward-thinking district. Describe that however you want. You are not stagnated in, you know, the 2000s or the 1980s. You're moving forward. You're pushing the next agenda. And for some people, that will filter them out. Good. But for the folks that want to get up and go and do good things for kids and community, this is the great place to land.
And you're being interviewed right now because prospective candidates are watching this from home. And because they want to make sure that it's the right match as well. So just the way you behave and conduct your business as a board, even though we have, one trustee was just sworn in and brand new, you know, we've got brand new, brand, brand new members, more experienced members, and then in between. And so that's positive too, that you've got newer board members, you've got experience too, and that's important to folks.
I want to commend just the running of the district, the business size. You're, you're doing things well. You've just passed bonds. And then, you know, you got a golden bell for a tiny house project. It's just phenomenal that you see the, the heart and the desire to, to reach out beyond your borders and help the community. So that's.
One follow-up question that I think is really important. Well, a lot of our questions were slanted towards the top of funnel of the talent attraction piece. How have you all navigated in supporting districts and being transparent around the compensation for the superintendent? I think one of the things that we have to really think through is that, you know, it's been a good amount of time since we've had a superintendent come in. Compensation, merit increases, things like that, right? So now we're going to have to calibrate with the market. We're going to have to calibrate in being able to attract that right candidate. I also want our teachers involved, our classified staff. I mean, when you see the sticker shock as a community member of what it takes to attract the right candidate that we're looking to source, how have you all helped facilitate the transparency process? Because let's be real, a superintendent is going to cost anywhere between 200, $250,000 and, and again, in a district that we do operate in the black, we are very engaged with our community, we want to be very clear in how we educate the public and that we are doing a calibration for the, around compensating that market.
Thank you for that question. At our focus group meetings, after we get the input from the three questions, then we spend time with the group talking about the process and what the board is going to do and how it's going to look and how their voices are going to be heard. And we talk about the compensation. And because when we post the job, you're going to need to post a range. We cannot anymore say just based on experience. So when we have our first governance workshop with you that sets the timeline, we'll get your parameters. Because if someone's making 250,000 in the district next door and the starting salary here is going to be 225 and they're a superstar, they aren't going to apply. So we make sure, and we benchmark, we have good relationships with the county office. We get current comps. We don't use Transparent California. And we bring you the comps. We bring you a comp, even though it's not really confidential, but we get the current comps. We'll look beyond Orange County because we want to find, you know, similar size, and we show those to you. And we include in those current comps, this also includes they're getting 30 vacation days a year, all the enhancements, you know, full benefits paid for. Then we, that's part of our discussion at that meeting. And then you'll set the parameters and we'll tell, you know, it's going to be between this, maybe the floor. I'm just saying that, I'm making this up. Please, I'm, this is not going to be, the floor is, you know, 200 and the ceiling is 250. And then it'll say depending on experience, because if you are getting someone that's an experienced superintendent, they're not going to start at that, right? Just like when teachers come in with experience, they go to a different level on the salary schedule. But we're, we don't think you should, we tell boards, it's very hard to become the highest-paid district for the board and for the superintendent too. You don't want that, but you want to also compensate someone fairly. You want the best police chief, you want the best, we're city employee, you know, you want the best city manager. These are, a superintendent's comparable to a city manager job, so.
All right. Any others? Okay. Well, thank you guys for coming out. Thank you for being here as late as you are here. We surely appreciate the presentation. We appreciate all the information, all that you do. So we really, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us and we wish you good luck and whatever your decision is, just thank you for inviting us.
Okay. Half of the, half of the agenda item. All right. So we can just go forward and have this conversation now. In light of everything that we've heard, do we want, does somebody want to make a motion? Do we want to have a conversation? How do you guys want to have? Does, does anyone have a, I mean, we could put a, a motion on the table first for one of, if you guys already have a, if somebody has a particular firm that they would like to present, and then we can get it out there and start talking about it.
Sure. Ma'am?
Yes.
So I think there was a particular strength in each firm that I appreciated. For example, COSCA, I like the fact that we would be the only district that they were searching for, that kind of exclusivity could provide a scope of attention that could pay off. For ESS, their high retention rate is something that I'm mindful of. I want longevity here, just like we had before, so that's, that's enticing. For me, though, I would favor the leadership associates for one simple reason, and that's because they understand Fullerton. If they ran Fullerton Joint Unionified search, they understand the idiosyncrasies and the nuances of what makes Fullerton, Fullerton. And so if you're prepared for a motion, then I would move that we select leadership associates.
Is there a second? Have a conversation about that?
I will second it. I don't know that I'm ready to make.
Go ahead and second it. And then we could talk about, now, now it's on the table. So now we could talk about that, what it has to, to offer, and then any other suggest, I mean, anyone can amend that, amend that motion if, if they so feel. So I, can I add? I, leadership, as you said, has been strong. I know that they have done our last two searches. And so the longevity of what they have done and understanding Fullerton, I, I agree, they know Fullerton. I agree that all three have lots of, you know, there's pros and cons about everything. What I was looking for is finding a search firm that knows us, that knows our programming, that knows our community, that understands how, how we operate. And so I felt, I felt leadership had that. I mean, and we can continue on.
I think leadership and ESS were very good. I would say, you know, there's always, I think about the taxpayer and what we're looking at and having an understanding of our community is important. I think the thing that, and I'm, I can go with either, but I will say the thing about ESS that I do like is that they're thinking about innovation. And when I think about the enrollment decline that we are experiencing as a district, being able to think about, one, yes, we are award-winning, you know, it is a great district to work for, we operate in the black, we don't have a lot of a deficit, great teachers. But I think it's important to also think about how we are strategically sourcing a leader that is going to be innovative and that is going to solve a lot of the issues that we're going to experience at the district. Leadership associates is very well-respected. They have a lot of networks up and down the state of California, and they do a talent development pipeline, which I think is great. The talent development pipeline component allows them to know the candidates even before they even apply. So there's a good matchmaking process there. I guess it depends on, as a board, what we value more. If it's, I think the community component, leadership definitely has it. They just ran the searches for Fullerton Joint Union High School District. The cost is great, so those are pluses there. And then the, the talent development program, I think, was really important, and then having a two-year guarantee. But if we want the AMEX concierge, data-driven, five searches a year type of, you know, white glove service, then ESS, so.
To me, the fact that they have worked with the Fullerton High School District and they know our district is really important, but also the fact that they're bilingual, multilingual, and culturally like response engagement approaches, I really, I really like that they align with our district and what we focus, especially right now with everything that is happening in California, not just in our district, but in California in general. I really liked their clear structured and kind of transparent, like engagement process where they said they're going to be able to do 25 community meetings, we can dictate, you know, it's like most of the other ones where it's unlimited and be able to do that, but they're going to be transparent with us throughout the entire process. And I feel like that is very important as well.
I don't think, I mean, I think that when we talk about COSCA, COSCA mentioned the, they, they mentioned bilingual, and they were more, I think, proactive in identifying our languages. And I think they, initially, as you're looking through the information that they provided, they had, they referenced languages more, whereas leadership referenced maybe programming more. So I thought, you know, leadership knows our district, COSCA knows the fact that we have three languages, that we really do need to be diverse, we need to be able to reach out. I think, you know, there's a lot of things that they all do. And I think, you know, we are, we are the customers, so we're going to be able to say we want this many stakeholder meetings, this is how we want them structured, this is who we want to meet with. And I, I think that's the same across the board. Basic services, I think, are kind of the same. I think that when you're looking at the added value at the end post-placement, ESS, you know, charges for that piece, right? That's where you get some of those increases and, and charges were because of their post-placement. I think they charged $1,200 for the transition to meet with the, yeah, yeah. So they were, they were meeting with, you know, the board and the new superintendent, the, the one year of mentoring, that was an additional 1,200 going on to that. the, the one year of mentoring, that was an additional 1,200 going on to that.
Oh, I thought that's how they break it down. And so the 1,200 is in their total cost of 30,000.
But if you didn't want to pay 30,000.
You could take it out.
Take that out.
Got it.
Right, so, so their costs would be more in line, but they wouldn't give the same amount of services. So I think you could get it lower, but you're not getting the same, the same services as you would with the other two. You know, it's really hard. I think it's, you know, we have to look at, from what I'm gathering, what we have to look at is, how well does that, how well do they know us? How well do they know what, what we do and what's important to us? Where, as you said, forward-thinking, you know, they brought up that. Most of them kind of know what, you know, what certain, what programs we have. And then it's, as a board, how did we feel connected with them? Because, you know, we're going to spend a lot of time with these people. And so we have to feel comfortable in, you know, do they have our best interest? Are they going to be responsive to us? Are, you know, are they saying it just to say it so that they're representing us? I mean, I think those are things that we just need to feel comfortable with. And as a board member, that you, we all have to feel that connection with those individuals. You know, bilingual is, is important. I mean, I, it sounded like most of them, I didn't ask COSCA, but I could assume that they, they had a bilingual.
Multilingual.
But the other two, I mean, I think had someone on, on their team that was bilingual. Leadership does have a huge support system where, you know, they aren't going to ask our, you know, Anna to do everything it looks like. You know, they'll have people there that are doing that.
I, I really liked that there's CSBA affiliate as well. Because they, and they have people on the board as well that are a part of their associate.
You know, when you look at things like this, it's, you can't really wrong.
I was just, I feel like we can't go wrong. Because I think all three.
That all three have value.
And I.
Value.
There was none that stood out in reviewing the process that I thought, oh, this is the one. I think that they all bring a lot of different values that would all work. And I think it reminds me that this is our job to drive, right? Like it's, we need to ask them, and as long as they're doing their job, they promised, they will find out and they will learn who we are and what we want and what our community is all about. I don't know that, I mean, it's kind of like a first step that they have already done in the high school. But, you know, that would be important for anybody to do that work, to find out what's Fullerton all about. And it seems like they would all do that. I, I think by, there is a little bit of value, kind of tipping the scales for me, in the partnerships that Leadership Associate has. And that they really do have a lot bigger reach and know a lot more folks, it seems. And I think when, you know, ESS was saying, you know, we know, the three people know so many folks and they're connected. I'm sure they are, for individuals, they're probably very well-connected. But it's three folks rather than, and I know that they did mention they have consultants, but, but it seems like the Leadership Network has a lot, or Leadership has a lot more of a network of folks that are well-connected. And I, what I've heard from other groups that have gone through this, I, all of the groups were recommended by folks that I talked to. I called other trustees and asked.
Yeah.
Including, you know, when COSCA, the person, person I talked to at BYUU said they did a great job. Carrie Buck had said that. But I think that there's a trust of superintendents out there, especially in Leadership Network, that, that they, or Leadership Associates, excuse me, that when someone's saying, I'm, I'm looking, I'm interested in looking for something new, they're going to them. They're trusting them to represent them. And especially if there's a risk of confidentiality and they want to make sure, you know, if I'm applying, is this going to work out and no one's going to hear if I don't get the job? There's a real trust with that group.
Yeah. Also, you said, Beth, that we've worked with Leadership Associates before, so did they bring us, Dr. Bob?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. Our last two, our last two searches were.
That's a big key component.
Not the same, not the same team.
No, but the same group.
Was way back when she started it, but she wasn't our team, but she was part of it.
I also think there's something to be said, and I like that you mentioned that, trustee Barryman, about the administrative aspect of relying on our internal team. The fact that they have four EAs, one former community member as.
Well, Lynn Harder was a high school.
Was at the high.
A high school admin.
I don't like to add more burden to, we're paying for, you know, for a firm and, you know, to be more expensive and then also add internal capital, even capital to do the work. Also another thing that I wouldn't want to put that work on our, on our administrative team.
No. As we have.
I think.
So, so the motion is Leadership? There was a second, there's some conversation. So are we ready to make the decision? Any more discussion? Any counter motions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of contracting with Leadership Associates? Say aye.
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 Opposed? No? Okay, so it's Leadership? And they, yeah, they, they were ready to start right away as opposed to January, so. All right, we got that done. Do we need another, are you guys okay? Anyone need to stretch their legs or visit the restroom? Or, I'm not saying that out loud, personal necessity? Five minutes. Okay, we ready? We're coming back. We are coming back. Is Anna over there? Anna's over there, right? She's hiding. Oh. Okay, so we now, everybody up here, okay. So we now need to go back to, we've, we've done our agenda approval, now we need to go to consent. So do I have a motion to con, approve the consent items? Do anyone want to pull, I do believe we need to pull one of the items.
Yes, Beth, staff is asking that we remove item MM, please.
Okay.
Was it MM? It's not on there anymore?
Leave it there?
Good to leave it?
Okay.
Okay.
Feel comfortable in that? Okay. So, so do we have any conversation about any of our items? Anybody?
I just want to clarify, do we remove the content of item MM? Or you think you've resolved the issue that was the concern?
So it's not, so it's not an issue?
No, at this time, we believe it's not an issue. And the question that arose was clarified with the board, with the trustee. Unless any other trustees have a concern.
I have a concern because, I mean, I don't want to get in trouble for airing someone's legal issues, but there was a concern that the person that we were considering contracting has some legal question, some legal, pending legal issues. Do we not think that that's a problem for contracting with this person? Will, will not affect their ability to do their job?
We do not believe it will affect the ability to do their job since they've been contracting with the district for quite a few years now and we haven't had any issues. But if we, if the board collectively would like us to pull it, we can pull it and reevaluate.
When is the basketball tournament going to be happening that we need referees for?
We have time, not till January.
Yeah, I'd like to just pull it. I mean, I'd rather have a discussion and, and have more time to investigate even the consideration of an alternative.
I'll make the motion to pull item MM from the, from the agenda, from the consent calendar.
Okay.
Yep, thanks, I'll second it.
So, okay, so we're, we're going to, there's a motion to approve the consent items by, and pulling MM, correct?
Yes.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of pulling MM? Is that, can we do, can we vote on that first and then go back to consent? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right. Now we can discuss, does anyone have any discussion on any of the items that are on consent that you want to comment on? Or doesn't sound like we want to pull any others? I was going to thank our Korean consulate and our center in LA. In total, 10,000, over $10,000 being donated to our schools. We've got, I, I did have a comment on item S. S?
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 Double S or a single?
Single S? Oh, gosh, that's right. We got all kinds of letters here, you guys.
S.
Alphabet soup. I'm going to.
Ah, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it's my S. So I, I'm going to comment on that because that is clarifying the contract with, as we have a new PLA contract labor agreement, we have to, we have to contract or hire a group to help facilitate the the contract and any, any, what's where I wanted to find, any disagreements, right? So, so this is a disagreement contract that we're, that we're approving tonight, which I'm cringing about. But we have a CWA and we need this person. We need somebody to be the facilitator of any kind of discrepancies with the unions. And so it's up to $500,000 for three years, three years? I did ask if this contract also covered the Area 18, which is the Work Opportunities Program as part of our CWA, and it does not. So I want to make sure that as we approve this and as this goes into effect, that somehow our staff, our staff are going to pay attention to the Work Opportunities Program of this, of this agreement. Because what we're saying is that when we agreed to this contract, when I agreed to this contract, part of it was for our workforce agreement, right? It was for getting curriculum for our students, having our contractors and our labor, our unions come out and, and be proactive in our community. And so there are, it's A through K on this. So it's tiny, you know, supporting tiny homes, doing some job shares, career fairs. There's a lot more that goes along with this that I don't want to get lost in the, in the shuffle because this contract is not covering that. Right? So that's what I wanted to bring up, that, that it's not, that this, this group is purely for facilitating any type of agreements or disagreements that the unions are having or, or making sure that the contract is signed. So that was my comment about S.
Would we like to pull?
No, I don't want to pull it unless somebody else wants to pull it. But, but from what I asked for research on this one and the, this group does not do that. So we can't even go back and revise the contract, is that correct, Rob?
We.
That is correct.
We can, well, the statement of work, just a point of clarification, the statement of work that this subcontractor is going to be putting forward, we can negotiate what's in that statement of work unless we're saying that that, that consultant is not able to or have the experts actually do what we're asking them for the PLA. Therefore, we would then ask that we would go out to bid or find quotes for people to include what Beth is asking for, for the component of the PLA. Am I correct in clarifying that?
We've checked with that, that company, they, they would not be the ones that would kind of follow up on that. They're looking for, you know, negotiations between, when we do these projects and we've checked with other districts, usually what happens is disagreements come up, not between the labor unions and the district, it's between the individual trades. And so it's, we need someone who's going to kind of mediate that. Also, we need someone to verify that prevailing wages are being paid. We know the prevailing wages are being paid, but it's going to be questioned and we need to have an outside person that's verifying that. So that's really the role. What we put into this agreement about apprentice, you know, coming in, working with our students and tiny home projects, it's not standard in a CWA, we put that in. And, but that is something that we think we will be able to work with them and we negotiated that with them and they negotiated that in good faith and we believe that they'll, they'll do that. So it'll be staff that will be following up to make sure they do that. If they don't do it, does that void the contract? I'm not saying it voids the contract, but it certainly would influence the board in moving forward in future years. moving forward in future years if this is something that they want to continue to use.
I think one of the values or the value proposition of approving a community workforce agreement is the educational benefit that is going to provide the district. We're going to be paying more for bond projects. Of course, you know, there's prevailing wages, you know, there's the the ability to hire pre-apprentices and their apprenticeships are more trained and all of the other valuable things around on our bond project and having great facilities, and they have a reputation of doing that, and I agree. There is an educational component in being an LEA and ensuring that that community workforce agreement has value for our teachers and providing them the professional development and also ensuring that we have CTE-aligned curriculum that is going to help feed the students through to our feeder high schools and to Fullerton College to then be employee-eligible. So I would say it's a big component of why this board approved a community workforce agreement. Now, if we're saying that staff has the ability and the expertise in-house to evaluate that component of the CWA, I would feel comfortable. If we don't have the resources in-house to be able to do an evaluation, which other districts do do, Long Beach City College, for example, we just passed a $900 million bond with a CWA and PLA project with the same labor unions. We are enforcing through workforce development that they include some of those aspects of the pre-apprenticeship work and that our faculty and instructors and classified staff have the training needed to deliver the programming and services that we said that we wanted there. So if we feel very comfortable as a district and you have the expertise on your team to do it, then I'm okay moving forward. But if we don't, then that's going to look like another statement of work and another contract to come through for clarification.
If the board would like, we can pull this item and we can go out to bid and we can try to find other people, and we can do that. We don't have any projects coming up in the near future. We have a little time on this, and I'm more than happy to go out and find another company if you would like, and I don't know what the cost will be. I think the more services we things that we want them to do. When we adopted the PLA, we made it very clear that we were going to have to use an outside consultant on this, that we do not have the expertise to manage this, the nuances of a PLA. And but I'm more than happy if staff directs us to pull this item, we can go try to find another vendor company to provide these services.
How many quotes did we source?
We worked with our legal and got a recommendation for this. It's professional services, so we don't need to go out and do a bid.
No, but we can source three different vendors, right? If it's over a certain threshold?
I can defer to Mr. McGaddams, but it's professional services.
No, yeah, I'm familiar with them. So but was this a specialty source contract?
Special.
In terms of there, I know each district, we have our different thresholds.
Sure.
In terms of when we ask staff to go and get different quotes.
Correct, this is a this is considered a this is considered a special service, like an architect, so or a legal service. So there's really no bidding process or thresholds on that side of it.
That makes sense.
I guess I I would be okay with the contract if, in fact, we felt like our staff members could follow up with that with it. I mean, if you felt like internally we could do the the oversight piece of making sure that the scope of or the contract in Article 18, that piece of it, if that is if if our district feels like they can do this and you have the staff available to do that. I just I want to make sure that that we are, since we said we signed off on it, this was an advantage, especially for me, that I want to make sure it gets done. But I don't want to put it on our staff members if you feel like we don't have enough time to do that, and if we're going to pay a group to do it, if somebody else could do it, I don't even know if any other groups would do that. I I don't know enough.
To clarify, Dr. Koglin, though, the carpenters and the trades committed to supporting us there, right? So we have their commitment, and so maybe it is worth the time to memorialize some of that commitment or just go back to them and go like just exactly figure out the contours. If you if we do have time for this, maybe we do pull it and go back to the trades and go back to the carpenters and go, hey, like, you committed to that? What would that look like?
Well, we have the agreement that said this is what they're going to do. So I took them at their word that they're going to do that. We can monitor that. I mean, is it going to be extra work for staff? Sure, it'll be extra work for staff. That's one of the things that we do. We do work here. And so we can monitor that. If it becomes too burdensome, burdensome, that's a word, we can certainly come back. But in checking with Parsons, this was not something that they were going to oversee. Now, are there other vendors or other companies that do that? Perhaps there are. If trustee Alvarez knows of some companies that do that, I would love to know who they are, and we can reach out to them.
If wouldn't mind just clarification. So Parsons Group is really just going to support us after the bid. Okay, so this has nothing to do with the PLA or CWA. That's a contract that again interjected with or supported with the district and the CWA tragic labor agreement. So that's the district and the PLA. Parsons Group is supporting us after the we go out to bid for the bond projects. It's over $1 million, and it's bond money being used as basis of the terms and conditions of the PLA and CWA. Parsons Group will come in after the fact that we find the lowest responsive responsible bidder based on what we're doing. General contract will be there. Parsons Group will be the mediator between us, the the general contractor and the and the subs that they'll be pulling in, based on the local labor that they're pulling in on that side. Keeping track of prevailing wages, making sure all the documents, legality, everything in there between contractors, labor unions, and the GC is followed through. So that's that's really the Parsons side of it. It's not going into the PLA. PLA is the contract based on the contract or the district. So it's separate entities. Not pulling Parsons in to say they're going to do all the extra stuff that the CWA, PLA, they're not going to do it. That's really the district's onus to say, what do we have to do unless the board says, find a company that's going to encompass everything.
And that's why I'm I'm very I'm prepared to vote to pass this tonight because thanks for the clarification, Mike, because this is not a consultant to coordinate the execution of the PLA. They are specialists, like we hire accountants to do our auditing, we hire lawyers to provide legal advice. They are specialists here in between the labor relations between the different the trades. So if we were looking for a consultant to oversee the entire CWA soup to nuts, Parsons isn't it. But I also think I'd be very pessimistic that there was a consultant out there that would do that kind of work. So I'm happy with the commitment that we got from the trades, that we got from the carpenters to support our efforts in executing some of the workforce development pieces, and then also executing this contract with Parsons to oversee a specialty and executing that part of the CWDA, CWA.
I may add a comment. I just on the educational side, as far as the support that we need to support, CTE programs, our construction, CTE strand, our tiny home and those pieces, that really is is an educational side that that we can work on, and we can make sure that the the trades unions are stepping up and giving us what we need on the educational side. It would be hard from someone for someone who is looking at enforcing the trades and the agreements and that the those that those relationships are working the way they need to to understand the educational side. I really think that's our area of expertise, and I do feel confident in our ability for our staff to be able to step up and say, hey, these are the things we need to make sure that our students understand the the construction pieces and the components of what does it mean to work in the construction trades? And then we can call upon what this contrast asks for contract asks for from our labor partners to say, hey, you you offered you you said you would do this as part of our contract, and now we're going to ask you to step up and actually deliver on what you promised you would do for us.
With that said, I would feel comfortable with that. So for me, I'm I'm comfortable now with item S as it is.
I agree.
Okay. So any other comments about any of the other S or double double letters?
Yeah, so I'll I'll make a motion to move the balance.
All right. So there's a a motion to approve the consent items without MM.
I'll second.
All right, I moved and seconded. Any other comments? No, seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you, guys. All right, now we're on to presentations. We've done A already. So B, we have our GATE presentation. Who's coming up for our team in making this presentation today? Who's starting this? Dr. Brown? Oh. I won't, I won't. They've been here for a long time. Do we all have our presentations, all of our stuff? You did give us some extra piece of paper, right? So making sure that everybody has their additional. So we have our GATE, what are we on? GATE? So we've got this, and then this this data piece is for the GATE. Okay? All right, making sure we all have what we need. All right, we're good. We've got it. We have what we need. Ready for you? I'm just waiting for Anna to pull it up. All right, good evening or good night. President Berryman, trustees, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Hammitt, and members of Cabinet and the community. Tonight, we're presenting an overview of the Fullerton School District's Gate and gifted and talented education program, our current model, the work of our GATE Advisory Committee, student enrollment data, and proposed updates to strengthen services and ensure equitable access across the district. All right, so the first slide talks about our GATE mission, and our mission is to ensure that gifted students from all racial, ethnic, socioeconomic, and cultural backgrounds are identified early and supported throughout their educational journey. We believe that giftedness exists in every community, and our goal is to provide learning environments that nurture talent through differentiated M-DEATH and accelerated learning opportunities. Our GATE Advisory Committee is made up consisted of 14 members, parents, teachers, site administrators, and district staff, representing a diverse cross-section of our schools. The team met five times, reviewed current research, and received input from the CAG president and OCDE's GATE coordinator. Their feedback and recommendations help shape the proposed updates you'll see tonight. And I do want to offer thanks to them for their time and work and input on this meeting after a long workday for both our parents and our teachers. So the overview of our current, oh, sorry, it's me. The overview of our current GATE model is Fullerton has six GATE-designated schools and offers GATE cluster services at every site. Students are placed at designated schools based on a theater pattern, and all sites support gifted students through differentiation, school-based services, and GATE-certified As you can see here, you will see the numbers of the students that are enrolled at each site. So at this this slide particular talks about the homeschools that feed into the designated GATE schools. And then you will see, next slide, the GATE-designated schools and the numbers of students that are GATE-identified at each schools. So we have our first six schools on this slide, and how many students are in each grade level that have been identified GATE. We'll be on to the next slide. We have our next set of schools and the numbers that are designated GATE at each site. We currently serve students district-wide with GATE-identified enrollment shown by grade and school. The attachment, the additional attachment that I've given you shows the breakdown by ethnicity at each school site for a total of 1,431 students. As we reviewed our program model and student data, several opportunities emerged to strengthen consistency, clarity, and equity of access across our schools. So our proposed updates focus on four areas, which I'll talk about now. So priority placement. Students are placed according to homeschool residence, that's priority one. Priority two, feeder school students who choose their GATE-designated school, this becomes their new homeschool. Priority three, students attending the school on an intra-district transfer. And priority four, students attending the school on an inter-district transfer. That is the order of priority in terms of placement. Now, for our proposed GATE updates. So we have GATE-designated sites where we will continue to offer services at current sites. We will consider adding additional sites, and the committee will review the feeder sites to ensure available space. We will also add a GATE plan to ensure all students' needs are met. The second choice would be GATE-designated sites where when class size reaches 35 students, sites will move to two equal classes the following year, and the site will ensure both teachers hold a GATE certificate. The third is the GATE cluster sites, where we have a clear definition of a cluster site, which is five or more GATE students at a minimum of two grade levels. The GATE cluster sites to have to add a GATE plan to ensure all students' needs are met. Oops, sorry. Considerations. The structure of the GATE-designated schools is the GATE plan where the class structure offers two classes to make space available for all students when GATE classes reach 35 students. Two classes will allow more students to participate. There's GATE certification of all teachers, talent development, GATE leadership at the district level, and then parent involvement. The other factors, the GATE plan will outline the process for intra- or inter-district transfers to become homeschool residents at GATE-designated sites. The committee will design a process to add additional GATE-designated sites, and the committee will develop a process to adjust or review feeder sites. This is the consideration for the structure of GATE-designated schools specifically. Now, here's the GATE cluster sites. The consideration is process for growth of GATE plan and services, five or more GATE students in two or more grade levels to qualify as a cluster site, talent development, and GATE certification. Other factors to consider are the process for transfers and the process to adjust or review feeder sites. So just as an overview, our current program is six GATE-designated sites. Students attend GATE-designated sites based on the feeder chart. The GATE clusters are available at all sites, with some with more students than others. Thirty-four students maximum per GATE class, and when capacity is reached, students on a transfer offered are offered general education placement or go back to their home GATE school. What's being proposed? And the differences are in red. Six GATE-designated sites, which we currently have. The committee will review the feeder sites for possible updates. The GATE cluster sites will have a minimum of five or more GATE students in two or more classes. When a GATE class reaches 35 students' capacity, the site will move to two equal classes the following year to include all students. So students do not have to leave their GATE school if they've been there already. The GATE-designated. The gate-designated sites and cluster sites will develop a gate plan. And the committee will consider adding additional gate-designated sites. So, the next steps ultimately are collecting stakeholder input and feedback on these recommendations, which we have done. So we would like the board feedback. Developing gate plans at both designated and cluster sites. Reviewing the feeder patterns for possible updates. And continuing to expand gate certification opportunities for all teachers. We appreciate the board's partnership and interest in ensuring that all gifted students in FSD receive the level of challenge, support, and enrichment they deserve. And at this time, I welcome your feedback and look forward to your feedback and questions. We have questions? Should we have questions? Who would like to start?
I just want to ask a clarifying question on the- the slides aren't numbered, but the, one of the very first, I think it's the second slide or third slide. It's the FSD program model currently. It says, "School-based gate students are selected based on multiple measures and are placed for one year." So what is a school-based gate student? Could you clarify that? And then what are those multiple measures?
So, school-based gate stu- uh, so, school-based gate students are students who are currently at their, their home site. They're not actually at a designated gate school. They're actually in their homeschool. And they're selected. Multiple measures could be the test that they all take in second grade. It could be a recommendation from the teacher. It could be eye-ready scores, S-BAC scores, different assessments. Teacher recommendation as well.
Okay, I'm sorry. School-based gate students?
Mm-hmm.
Say that again?
School-based gates- school-based gate students, meaning they, they're haven't- they're not in a gate program school yet. They're actually at their actual school site.
So the difference, if you're a gate- if you're a school-based gate student, the site has designated you-
Yes.
As a, as opposed to passing the district assessment that we give to all students, which plays-
In second grade.
District-wide.
Okay, so-
Those sites can identify-
Basically, teachers say, "This child is gate."
Plus, they have data. So you've-
Yeah.
Like your S-BAC scores, your eye-ready. You've got student work samples and teacher recommendation.
Correct.
They're really the multiple measures that are-
Okay.
Used to determine whether or not that student can be considered for local-site placement only. But that doesn't mean that-
They can't-
They have, they can't transfer because they haven't been considered-
Correct.
Truly officially a gate student.
Does that only happen at gate-designated schools?
No, that can happen at any school.
Any school.
Okay.
But at a gate-designated school, if you have a student that's school-based and you have 30, and they're okay for one year, the next year, if now you have 35 kids that are identified by the district, that school-based kid-
Gets bumped.
Gets bumped, right?
In the current model.
Yeah.
Yes.
The current model.
In, in future model, are we dealing with these school-based students?
In the future, future model, we would look at, at splitting the- we would have two gate classes then at those new designated schools.
They would be considered part of the 35 that then meets that threshold to be-
Right, split, split into-
Split.
To be split.
Okay.
Have two gate classes and then they would still get the benefit of the gate.
And would they also be considered part of the cluster?
It could be. Yes.
If, if they're not, and they're not at a designated school.
Yeah.
Yes.
The five. Okay. Thanks.
Currently, there's only one gate-designated site in South Fullerton, which is Richard.
Yes.
That's correct.
So, so what this presentation is saying, that there's the changes for now to alleviate any of the issues that are happening today or going into this is, is the, the cutting of, or the additional class if in fact those numbers go up?
Yeah.
So the concerns that our community had at the beginning of the year, what would have happened is they would have taken half of one class and moved them and then did it that way.
Yeah.
Based on the new. In addition to that, this, this group will continue work on looking at adding, adding more gate-identified schools.
Yes.
Right? So if, if we wanted to add more in other areas, that's what this committee is going to look at is, do we need one in a different area of the city? And then they're also going to look at the feeder schools that are going into the existing classes.
Correct.
Existing schools. So they're, so the work is not done yet.
Absolutely not.
What you're saying is that this is an immediate kind of thing to address the immediate need. But the work of this committee is still going and that you're going to come back in spring with more?
So, after we get direction from the board, the committee will most likely convene again either in December or January to begin work on what next, the next steps are.
Which is addressing more, more maybe-
Absolutely.
Identified schools and adjusting in boundaries that might-
If I can-
What would, what would make a gate-cluster school into a gate-designated school? Like, how many students would you need to have in that school to make it a gate-designated school? Because I'm looking at the data. And for example, Fisler has a lot of students. And Beechwood has a lot of students that are in clusters. But that's what they're going to be looking at. So how many, so what, how many students would you need to have to make it into a designated gate school? I'm just curious. You don't, I mean, 100, 200?
I was part of the committee too. I think part of the work will be to look at what, what those numbers look like across the grade level. And does that feed up? Is there a feeder pattern from third all the way through six? So that you have a coherent program all the way? And then to determine, part of the, the key to the designated school is to also have feeder school. So are there feeder schools that could also feed the new designated schools? Because that's part of the process as well. Not just having an isolated designated school, but a school that also could take students from feeder areas.
We have an isolated school.
Yeah. And I think to get back to your, your earlier question, of, I think one of the, there's, there's really two steps to the work. One is to get this, this most recent changes out to our community, so our community knows what these changes are. And to get these implemented as we head in, because we're getting ready for open enrollment. So we want to be ready for the 26, 27 school year. And then once we can get that rolled out and get our families ready and ready to work through open enrollment, then we could start to look at the feeder schools and the designated schools after we can make sure that we can get everyone enrolled and headed to the right school for the new school.
So, I have a question because I think you said, Dr. Brown, that this means that gate-designated sites become the homeschool. If we split, like, you get to 36 kids, you split, you have two gate classrooms, let's say, at Anacacia, then that becomes the homeschool for a kid that has transferred from Commonwealth or someplace else, right?
Correct.
My concern is that if we're looking to increase clusters and we're saying, you know, "Let's build opportunities for kids in places that aren't gate-designated right now," if you make that the homeschool for all the kids that have already left, then you're siphoning off all the kids that would form a cluster. And I, I know it's hard on that child than be tossed around, but, but we're never going to get to the place where we have a strong cluster in the non-designated sites. If the homeschools become, if those gate-designated schools become homeschools as they split and split and split, you're just going to bring all the kids to those places. And I, I don't see the future of this getting more equitable. I see it becoming more concentrated in a few places.
Well, we wouldn't necessarily eliminate the cluster model at those schools because all, all gate students will continue to receive services at their site. So it has to be a certain amount of numbers in order to be that, that designated site, right? So, all this simply does is clarify where there's a formal cluster model is required. And, and there'll, there'll be service at their site in that cluster model. So I, I don't think we'll get to a place where the, like, we'll have a large number of designated sites, but we want to make sure that we do have those cluster models at all sites so that students continue to get service. Because I agree with you. I don't want to water down, you know, or take from, you know, and deplete our schools in our most needed areas because those students provide a model and example for other students who are not necessarily high-achieving.
Yeah. I mean, that's my biggest concern.
Yeah.
Is if we are splitting and creating more and more gate-designated classrooms, which means more and more room for kids to transfer and stay, that we're siphoning off. We're, we're never going to get to- I, I don't know that we're going to be attracting students to stay in their homeschools if there's two, only two other kids in that gate cluster, you know, or, or there isn't an opportunity to offer a gate cluster. I, I would think a more effective way would be to, yes, split the schools, but then there's not a gate doesn't- I mean, when it's more equitable, kids will realize that they can have these same opportunities at homeschools as well. When there's clusters at all of them, that makes it more attractive for folks to stay in their homeschools if they have the same opportunities there. I think, I hope, as we divide up exclusive classrooms, that there's an ability to learn from all kids at all levels. And we have an opportunity to encourage students. It's not stay, transfer to a new gate school or stay in general ed, but actually, here's a cluster model that's going to really serve the needs of all the kids in that school.
And that's the hope. The, the hope is that we, we, like you said, their school becomes attractive enough for them to want to stay there. All their teachers are, become gate-certified. So parents understand that they are qualified to teach their students, regardless of whether or not it's a gate-designated school. And that we don't eliminate gate services at schools with smaller gate populations.
At this proposal, I think you have to have five kids per, and then two classrooms. So if you had 12 students only in fourth grade, you wouldn't be considered a gate cluster because you wouldn't have multiple classrooms or grades.
That's, that's just for the development of the gate plan. It's not that school site. So, so that's the only, the only distinction is there still would be a gate-certified teacher who would still be providing gate instruction to those 12 students. So they would still be getting a gate program. The key is when we get two of those groups, then developing at that school, that they have a program that has a, a consistent program, third grade through sixth grade, where you've laid out, these are the experiences kids will get at each grade level. This is how we're going to be creating that, that depth, complexity, novelty, and acceleration for all of those students, each grade level, each year. So the idea is that if you're in a cluster in third grade, you're, next year, you're going to get a, an increase or a step up in fourth, and that will continue to progress all the way through six. So that's, that's really where the, that whole idea of a gate plan came from. And to make sure that that gate plan became the catalyst to, to drive those clusters.
So there's not a gate plan now? Is there a gate plan now?
At those, at those schools, would they have the clusters? There's not. So we'll be implementing that gate plan for those schools with that, that gate plan now.
Sorry, what is a gate plan?
Gate plan is a, well, it's a school planning document where they, they look, their teachers meet together. They have the cohort of teachers that are teaching the gate classes, that are certified teachers. And they develop, what is the scope and sequence? What is the instructional plan that we're doing for the students related to gate instructional strategies? So there's already a state standards. There's already our, our curriculum maps. There's already those things, which students will get anyways, correct?
Is that, so are gate plans being developed now? Or is this a proposal that teachers are now going to have to plan and develop gate plan?
Gate, gate plans are currently at the designated sites.
But not at the cluster?
But not the cluster site.
Okay.
Correct. So now we would be working, and this isn't going to be put onto the teachers. This will be an activity that will be done with the administrator and with that PLCF.
I think my primary concern with this is I'm still unclear as to what the recommended actions are because it sounds like we're waiting for more-
Information.
Information from the committees. But you're also at the same time looking for guidance or board direction. So what specifically, like, if we say, "I, I, I, I", like, what, what, what legal action are we-
Approving.
Yeah, what are we approving?
So ultimately, you're, you're approving the-
Let me go back to the, hold on. The proposed updates? It's the splitting? It's adding the second class?
Yes.
And 35?
More than 35 to split into two equal classes that went, the, the following year.
Right?
And for them to develop the gate plan.
When you have two classes that are five or above.
Correct. And for us to reevaluate the feeder patterns.
To give you the okay to start doing this extra committee work.
Correct.
Okay.
The three things.
So, if that's the case, just- how many classes do we have in general education where the class size is 16 and 17?
Oh.
Well, they wouldn't only be 16.
No.
They would, yeah.
Wait.
Be filled with general education students. It would be served 16 in the classroom and then additional class.
Okay, so you hit 35. You break apart that 35. And then-
And half.
Half and half. And then Gen Ed.
And what it does is it takes away, remember how at the beginning of the year, Acacia had like three or four rank, you know, stragglers? They were going to move those three or four only into that other class. So instead of doing that, they'll split the gate class into two, move it in, and then backfill it with gate-placed, you know, school-based kids or general, general ed.
So it sounds like this board is, there's a, there's a threshold issue that this board is dealing with is, what are you going to do with designated classes? Are you going to continue to support this model or are you going to get rid of it? Right? That's, that's-
Sounds like we're going to continue it unless we have incidents where you have too many children in one class.
And I think the idea is because we've had issues in the past where we've asked students who are in an intra-district transfer that they now have to go back to their homeschool. And we don't want to do that rather than just put those three students into another class Rather than just put those three students into another class, we're splitting the class in half so that at least they have that. I know half the classroom. Yeah, the cohort, and they have half of their friends in one class and the other half another.
There's something very biblical about this, like splitting the baby.
Or to a cluster, right? You're, you're kinda doing two clusters with just.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's no.
So you're turning them into clusters, like bigger, right?
But I have a feeling the parent.
Thinking it correctly?
Yes, you are.
I have a feeling the parents that had issues would be, both sides would be unhappy with this decision, right? A good compromise leaving everyone mad. Because the, one of the primary arguments was that they appreciate the value of having the same cohort of students, of the friendships and the relationship they developed year in, year out. That's the, that's what they see as a comparative advantage of a, of a gate designated class. I think what they're asking us to do is choose, right? Who gets bumped and who doesn't get bumped, not.
I mean, unfair if we really have to think about it. It's like, how do I tell your child who is really, who really doesn't belong to this school because of the way that, that. The process is written, that they have, they don't have priority?
Yeah.
Based on the priority, I mean, I, I, I don't know.
Yeah, because ultimately, if, let's say, half of you who are at the dais are now newly identified gate. Then that bumps out these three, they have to go back to their homeschool site and they might now have to be a part of a cluster. You know what I mean?
Yeah. I, I think, alright, so I think, just so the rest of the board understands my view is, I would not support. The class size reaching thirty-five students breaking it up if we're going to keep the school designated model. Because it undermines the school designated model for that site. And so my preferred policy preference would be that we establish rules. My preference would be that even if you're not from that home site, that if you are in that program, you don't get bumped. That we don't interrupt a child's friendships and classroom dynamic as much as possible. So that would be my stance on the class size reaching thirty-five students piece.
What do you do when you get thirty-six students that are gate identified?
The thirty.
So these students are tested in, so if they don't get in, in third grade, then they're coming into fourth grade. That is when the issue arises, because if the class is already full, what are you gonna tell this fourth grader again?
So what I would tell that, I would tell that family is if you tested in and you wanna continue into this program, that you're gonna be guaranteed a spot in this program. And that if you newly test in or newly identified as gate, that there are cluster programs available for you. But this kid was here and I don't want to interrupt that kid's classroom dynamic and friendships. That is a tough choice, but this kid was here. And I would rather have that stability and allow you an opportunity, create your own stability in a gate cluster. So I would not support splitting that classroom up. At the same time, I would ask that school designated gate kids be treated the same as any other gate kid. That if the school designated as a gate kid and let's say they move to a designated site, that they don't get bumped just because they're quote-unquote "school designated." So I think I might differ and agree with some of this board on some things, but, and perhaps it might, might be easier to vote separately on each recommended action so that we can record the votes. But, and then finally, the third issue that I have is, it's obvious to me that if we are gonna continue with the designated model, that. And if the community and the school wants it, FISLAR probably should be a designated class or designated site because the numbers support it year in, year out. And so if that's something that the community wants, I'd certainly support that move.
Trustee Jo, I do need to add one more wrinkle to the, to that issue is, the issue is when we have a student move into a area. Who's new to that area, who's already designated as a gate student. So it's their homeschool. So then that, that student would then be entitled to go to their homeschool ahead of a transfer student. Legally, so that's, that's the challenge we face then, so what, so if we make a guarantee to a, to a parent. That your child is going to be, you know, they're transferring, they're going to stay there, we then run into a bind, right?
Yeah, okay, then I'll go on the record and make it a tough choice and someone gets bumped, right? If legally we have to accommodate that child, then fine, let's have to bump one child, right? But the, the purpose, my guiding principle here, what I'm trying to articulate, is I wanna do as minimum harm to the stability of a child as possible. Regardless of whether they're school, so-called school designated or gate designated, they're in a class, they're establishing friendships. And unless the law compels me to bump them from the class, I don't want to set a board policy doing so. It would be my opinion.
So that means the board would have to make a recommendation also on this slide, that we change the priorities. Cuz these are the priorities currently, priority one, two, three, and four, in that order. So you would have to make a recommendation to the committee to go back and reprioritize those.
But how do we reprioritize something that's, that's legally binding for us? I mean, cuz going back to your point is, you could have five people that move in over the summer. And they're all gate identified and they're all going into the same class. Now you have five kids you've had to bump. If you have a policy that then allows you to create another class, then at least you're keeping those children together. Cuz I, I'm, I agree. We, I don't think anyone here wants to move children in midst, I mean, I did not place my child in gate. He was school identified cuz he doesn't test well, he should have been a gate student. I did not put him in gate because I didn't want him to have to every year be subject to being kicked out. Because I felt that strong that I did not want my, my child to have to go through that, so I didn't do it. But when we go back to it, if we have five people that move in, we're legally obligated to have them go into that class. So I think what we're trying to do and is, if I'm understanding, that part of this committee were parents that were involved in, in the gate situation at the beginning of the year. So they agreed that this is, you know, it's not, for them, they wanted this, this only gate class. But next step is if I can't have this, then, then I'm willing to do this. And I think that group was willing to do this. And I don't think this happens all the time. I think, once you start to look, and so if we, if we move forward with the committee work in looking at the feeder schools. And looking at the boundaries, then maybe they'll say, oh, it looks like every year Acacia is having this problem. Maybe we need to take a look at how many feeder schools are going into that, and maybe you need to adjust it. Need to, you know, add other schools that are already feeding into Acacia, take those numbers away. Because now they have more school-based or, or boundary or, or neighborhood-based kids.
That would adjust priority two, which means that, let me go to this slide, I'm sorry. Good lord. Which means that we would adjust the slide at the, here, which is our gate identified schools and the schools that feed into them. So the committee would go back and now look at the numbers and adjust the feeder schools that feed into the gate designated. Or the homeschools that feed into the gate designated.
Maybe add a.
And potentially add more designated schools or, or change the feeder pattern so that it allows for students, less disruption.
And that's what you're doing and that's what you're saying, but give us authority to go ahead and.
Yes, yes.
And present that.
There, there are families that even when their home feeder school, they may choose a different school. We have open enrollment, so if there's space, they might choose Acacia even if, you know, Hermosa's their home gate identified, that, well, that happens. So we have to recognize that, that, that even as we change the, and look at boundaries, these priorities, families don't always follow them, right?
They, they follow with their feet. I mean, if there's, this is a, there's no happy, there's not gonna be a.
I wanna, I wanna offer a different perspective in that, when we had the presentation from Patricia Childs. We asked the question, is there value in having the same kids, thirty students in, from third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, all together? And she said, not really, as long as you have a, a group that are engaging and talking and learning together. Whether that's five or ten or thirty-five, the value is there. And I know that it, I mean, it's hard to argue when families say, this is so important and these are the kids that I've grown up with. But that community can be built across sixty kids, not thirty kids. I'm, I know with my children's experience with Raymond, there were two Spanish classes and they mixed it up all the time. And because of that, kids got to know one another and it added social relationships, opportunities, experiences. I, I see value in mixing kids up and giving them opportunities to learn from one another. As long as they still have the gate identified teacher and approaches and the ability to be with like-minded peers who are gonna throw them on and ask good questions. I don't, I don't personally believe, I don't think the data bears out that there's an importance of keeping them singularly in a gate-only class.
And the value varies and it's subjective, right? And so the, the real value is in the vertical articulation that happens. The real value is in the gate plan that's developed and how you're using those depth and complexity icons in the classes across the board. And so who benefits? The students who are not identified gate, but, but are receiving those depth and complexity icons and receiving that high-level work. Because they can, because we're holding them to higher standard. And they're so, the models are left to the autonomy of the school site on how they decide to. Group or cluster or clump their students or what kind of creativity they could, they could, you know, come up with. So I, I think there's value in both ways. I, I have two of my, actually, three of my four were in gate schools. And they were clumped with the same group the whole way through. But then they also did some, what is it, looping? So where they actually went to one teacher for math and science and then went to another. So there, there's, there's so much variety that you can create in this, but the autonomy, like I said, is left to the school site knowing their students.
Yeah, so I, I think my response to that is then, that, that's why I asked the question. I think perhaps this is time as a district to decide philosophically what we do with gate designated sites. Because I think if, if, if it's the will of this board to get rid of designated sites, then that's a discussion we should have. Rather than, for lack of better terms, forcing a designated site to become a de facto cluster site. If we have too many gate kids at that site. And so I, I think that's a worthy discussion to have and I'm, I'm open to it. But the reason I don't support this proposed action, this particular recommended action of when a class size reaches thirty-five. It's, you told the parents and you told the family this was a designated site. And then one camel straw, right? It is now de facto a cluster site. That's the bamboozle that I don't support. So either we decide as a board that we're not gonna have designated sites, we're gonna go full cluster. But if we're gonna have designated sites, then we should support designated sites, which is why another recommended action that I would propose is that. We direct this committee to go to talk to FISLAR and go, do you guys wanna be a designated site? Because the numbers clearly are there. So if we're gonna, as a district, continue to have designated sites, let's support that model.
Because we do have other designated sites though in the district that don't have thirty, even thirty. I mean, we have even, even at Acacia, for example, at fourth grade, right, we have twenty-two.
Also, even if we were to make, if we were to make FISLAR a designated school, that is one of the feeder schools for Acacia. So that would definitely bring the numbers down. But one of my questions for you was gonna be, how often does this happen? How often, like in the past years, past five years, ten years, how often have we had to? I don't wanna say dump. Bump, sorry.
Send them back.
Split or remove kids from their homeschool. Like how often does it happen? And do we have the numbers to try to figure out where these kids are coming from? Because like James said, I mean, I hate to have to break, because then you really are, if you are breaking the classes. Then they really do become clusters. They're not officially a gate designated class.
Right.
And so I would be interested in getting more information as to which, which current designated schools. Have overcapacity or a trend that shows that there are more students that are gonna be enrolled. And where they're coming from and if there's the numbers like FISLAR and Beechwood that could potentially. Gate designated schools, because they have the numbers, then they wouldn't be feeding into schools that are already full.
Which is the work that you're going to do.
Correct.
Yes. But so in order for us to move on.
What do you need to do so that you can do that? What do we do?
So I think what, in order to move on, what you're looking for right now is a solution. To be able to provide to parents who are considering open enrollment coming up. And that's what this thirty-five would do. It would help that group say, if this happens, then this.
Correct.
We have a solution. But before the end of the year, you may come up with, oh, it looks like, you know, if we move these FISLAR kids into the gate designated, now we've alleviated. You know, that, that need. Because I don't think that this, this particular problem happens every single year. It just happens with whatever that cohort is.
Correct.
So it's not every year, but it's, it's not a one-and-done either, it, it happens.
Right, it, it will happen again, I mean, and it may be a potential thing that may happen at FISLAR. If we make it a designated school site and, and there's now feeders into there, we can't guarantee that those parents are gonna get FISLAR with their high numbers either. So that might become, we might potentially create another issue.
So by waiting until you have this other work done, so that go back and take a look at the other, the other things that you've got the committee working on. Does, if we didn't do anything, if we didn't approve anything tonight. And send you back to go do the rest of the work, what would that do?
It buys us a year. Right now, it, it eliminates the need to bump any child for a whole year until we really look at what the numbers are going to look like. Because you still have more students who will be tested in February or when the, you know, when the test is given district-wide. You still have new, more students who will be homeschool recommended. And then you still have students who are going to apply on an intra-district, inter-district. But that will allow these parents who came in August or whenever to stay put for one year while we look at the feeder patterns. While we address the issues of clusters at those designated sites or clusters, we already have clusters across the board. So, and then making sure all sites are prepared for gate-certified teachers everywhere.
So then those students get to stay at that school?
Absolutely.
With the majority of their co, of their peers?
Yes.
Maybe not the whole class, but half of them.
Correct.
So what we're, so what you're looking for is, okay, James is saying maybe we do it by.
By piece, okay.
Do you still wanna do that or you wanna?
Yeah, so I, I, I think there's at least four recommended actions that I could identify. Is when class size reaches thirty-five. The second one is gate plan to ensure all students are met for the cluster sites, along with a clear definition of a cluster site. And then the fourth one is add gate plan to ensure all students are met at designated sites. I mean, are there more?
The committee to review the feeder sites?
There's five.
And you can even give us conditions on those recommendations, like, you know, we want you to look, like you mentioned, you want you to consider FISLAR as a possible designated site or, you know, or as.
Sunset Lane had numbers too, right?
Yeah.
But they're also designated right now. So that, I, okay, just from my perspective, I think my vote, I'd want three things. I'd want direction to the committee to examine FISLAR and get input from that community as to whether they wanna be a designated site. I think the numbers bear that out, so that's one. Two, I'd wanna, I'd wanna make it a board policy that a school designated gate kid is treated no differently than a district testing in gate kid. And then, three, I would like to record a no vote on the splitting the two equal class sizes when it reaches thirty-five.
Are we evaluating eight students outside of just taking a test at the district? Are we looking at multiple measures at the district site to say?
Yeah, that's a school-based.
That's, that's a school-based model, but that particular learner would have to be at that site.
Yes, so are you?
I'd say, you know, my child at Pacific Drive is recommended for gate.
In second grade?
In second grade.
Okay.
Right? They didn't test into it at the, the district, let's say they did, third grade, they didn't test into it.
Okay.
Right? Not a great test taker, et cetera. They would be able to, would they be able to move around the district like any other gate student to a designated site?
No.
Not with the way the policy is current.
You're right.
That, right there, there's an equity.
So we have the.
From an equity issue, because what I'm seeing around the feeder patterns and especially for the one designated site in South Ploton.
Let me go back.
And even the, of where, and it's cur, I'm curious, cuz I looked at Acacia and I saw Maple is a feeder to Acacia. And then I looked at the Hispanic population there. Woodcrest, so some of these feeder sites are actually funneling talent away from the south.
But as it currently stands, if you, based on the prior, oh, let me go further. Based on the priority, if your student is site identified and they want to go wherever or to a gate designated school. They will now become priority three. So if the school fills up where they, where they are attending, because they, you know, they can do the work and they're, they wanna be part of that cluster or that designated site. They would, they would be bounced if.
Right, so now we.
Somebody comes in from the whole, a resident comes in.
Because let's look, let's be realistic, multilingual language learners do not test well in gate programs. The gate, the gate test does not, are multi, that is predominantly the popular, so multi, that test is very biased.
Especially at second grade.
At second grade, so for multilingual language learners, it's not.
And it's based on a national norm, which is, right.
Well, we can, we can make the argument around the GRE and the SAT.
Right, so, but, which we also, which, but, we, which lends it.
No, I wanna drive the point that there is an equity.
Right, right, right. Which lends itself to the fact that we do take into consideration teacher recommendations. Because we know that students can be ready and they can be identified, not solely based on the test, but the advocacy of, of their teachers.
But they still can't.
But this, it sounds like this board is saying we want teacher identified or school-based identification to count the same as gate passing.
Correct.
Nationalized test.
And I, I realize that, you know, I brought this up, but to be mindful of the practical considerations of what that decision could be. I think it might be, rather than a blunt instrument of a board decision right now, perhaps board direction or the committee to examine what would happen if that were the case. I think the one thing you need to kinda get us moving is that it looks like the one thing you need is you need a vote. On splitting up that class.
I do.
That's it, at a minimum. You don't need anything else, cuz everything else is board direction and it looks like there's consensus here. But the one thing you need is a recommended action vote?
Yes.
Okay.
So basically, to alleviate the issue that we had in August, so these parents do not come back here next August, we need to solve that problem. Correct.
Okay, I'll tell you why I'm gonna vote yes to split the classes. Because I think that, I'm convinced there's not a significant value of keeping the same group of kids all together. I think it keeps children at their school rather than just one classroom. And I hope that it will demonstrate that as long as there's a strong cluster and this teaching methods for gate, that kids can thrive. And I want that to encourage more clusters throughout our schools. So less kids are moving because they feel like there's something valuable at a different school. And instead, we'll see, receive the same opportunities and teaching that is beneficial for everyone. And I also think there's a huge value to the kids that are not gate identified, who then are receiving those gate strategies. And I think that's good teaching and all of our kids will benefit from it.
I am going to second Ruthie's.
Making a motion?
No, I'm just agreeing with Ruthie. I'm going to agree with Ruthie's statement, even though I do not want to separate the classes. I feel like unless we do, we are not really solving any problems. Because even, as you said, even if we do open a new gate class or gate, gate designated school at FISLAR. Their numbers are higher than thirty-four. And so we're gonna have the exact same problem. So it's who do you accept into the gate program and who do you not? Or who do you exclude, or who do you tell now you're gonna have to go to a different school, even though this is your homeschool? Unless you separate the classes. So. So and unless we change our priority placement, which we just talked about. It it it's, we are going to continue to have the exact same issue. And if you're talking to the parents and they're part of the group that are saying, this is not ideal. Which is, I think, what we are saying as well, but there is no other answer to what another next. What the next best option is, this is the next best option.
For now.
For now.
For now.
Until we come up with something different or something else. And we hope that with you being able to go back and think of more ideas, you can then bring them to the board and we can always amend. Um whatever it is that we decide to do today, if it doesn't work for the district. But we do have to alleviate some of the issues that we're having right now, and yes, I agree, we should create more um. Gate identified schools if there is the need, and we see that this is happening, but it's not going to solve this. It's not, we're not answering the question to the problem, which is going to continue to happen. If we don't do that. Oh, I'm going to say yes to.
So do I have a motion to approve the gate proposed updates?
A motion to approve the splitting of classes once they reach the threshold of thirty-five students. Um and then to develop the gate plans for clustering. Um we want to look into school based designation to be considered the same as in the national gate testing. And um review the feeder patterns.
I'm going to second.
Would you accept a friendly amendment to uh split that up into two votes, the splitting of the class size and everything else? Because I'm happy with, I'm happy to vote yes on everything else. Just want to record a no vote on the class size split.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, we can do that.
So amend your motion.
So amend the motion. And just, yeah.
To be, we are asking the.
Time out. Before you do your motion, I'm, I'm just looking at the proposed updates, because I just don't, I don't want to leave them in. In a lurch if there, if there's something else on this list that you really needed to have done.
That was the main thing. The main thing was the splitting of the classes.
Okay. Okay, okay, so let's do, let's do separate motions. So with, so Ruth, you ready for your first motion?
Okay, I'll go with the harder one first. So first motion would be develop gate plans for clusters. Evaluate our feeder system and the way that they go into gate designated school. And then explore ensuring that school based designation is equivalent to gate testing.
Did you add, did you say additional gate sites?
No, she kept that separate, separate motion, right? And so just to clarify, are you guys going to, the the second and the third bullet, or the first two red bullets? Are you going to vote on those together? That would mean that, I'm sorry, the third and the fourth.
So, no, I think we're only separating one.
Okay, so then we also need about the gate clusters to have a minimum of five or more gate students in two or more classes. Is that part of that motion?
That was not. I think what her motion was is that gate plans.
Gate plans for cluster schools.
Okay.
I don't know that we need to set a minimum, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I want, I want to hear more input before we make that decision.
Okay.
Okay, so your motion is to split through the thirty-five, through two classes, no, no.
No, the other one.
Go ahead.
Develop gate, gate plans for clusters, evaluate our feeder system, and ensure that school based designation is the same as gate testing.
Do I have a second for that? Right? Any other discussion on that one?
Yeah, just to clarify, we're not actually dictating that school identified students, right, are the same. We want the committee to.
To evaluate.
Sending them.
Evaluate.
Their work, yeah. We're making no decisions for them tonight. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Second motion?
I motion to adopt the new policy that when gate designated classes reach. A student threshold of thirty-five, that they are split into even classrooms as soon as possible, not to disrupt the school year, but. Um as the next planning for the next class.
A second. Been moved in seconded. Any other discussion on this one?
And just to be clear, that, so I'm going, going back to the third bullet of the second red bullet. If a school does not have a minimum of five students for my clusters, they do not have to do a gate plan.
We haven't talked about.
We're not.
Okay. Okay.
We're doing all, we're dissecting.
Gotcha, okay.
So this is just this one.
Okay.
All those in favor of that motion say aye?
I have a, I may have a question about this. So the motion as constructed is as soon as possible not to interrupt, right? But if a kid moves into that school, what do you do? And becomes a thirty-fifth student, in the middle of the school year, what do you do?
Then you turn him away, right?
The middle of the school year, they move in, they're placed.
Yeah.
Or if the school's full all the way across, then. Start of the new school year, then we go ahead and replace that child in the class.
So the legal requirement kicks in at the start of the year?
Start of the school year.
But not in the middle of the year.
Not in the middle of the year, correct.
Uh any other discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And then do we have a motion for the gate cluster sites to have a minimum of five to have a gate plan? Right, is that the next, that's the one that we haven't done yet?
We're defining a cluster as five or more, but then they would be required to do a gate plan. So for example, Orange Thorpe does not have two, does not have two classes with five or more, so they wouldn't have to do a gate plan.
But they still offer the program.
Correct. They're a gate, they're, they're a cluster school, correct.
But they just don't have to have a plan.
Correct.
I'm fine to approve that. I, I would make the motion to approve that. I think, I think principals do have plans. My guess, they do articulate plans, but yes, motion to approve the suggestion of gate clusters. To create gate plans when they have five or more students in two different grades.
I'll second the motion.
Been seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Thank you.
So to be, to be, to be.
CBD.
To be continued.
Yes.
Okay, I, I have to say something right now, because we're now on C and we have. We have L or something, right? We've got a lot. So, well, this is DLA, which is not going to go fast. So I think my question to this board is. We, we have many more presentations, some of which have to be, are timely, right? I mean, you've got contracts and things like that, we need to, and that are maybe faster in, in what they are. DLA will probably be at least a half an hour, I would assume, between the presentation and the. The deliberation and direction is what I'm guessing.
Yeah.
Um we could go to all of the D through the rest and maybe approve those, come back and do the presentation. And then see what time it is. Is if we were to not make a decision about C this evening. What would that do? Would that stop progress? Would that be something that was?
It, it, well, there's two things. It depends on the recommendation. So if the recommendation from the board is to expand the dual language program in twenty twenty-seven. Then no.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Seven school year. For in, in August, in twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Wait, I said it right. You guys are confusing me and I'm sleepy. Um, okay, so if, if the recommendation is to expand it in fall of twenty twenty-seven, the timeline becomes looser. If, if it, if the recommendation is to open this fall, then yes, it does put uh some restraints or constraints. Because now we have, we're having this open enrollment window which opens.
Got it. Okay. And we won't know that until we can hear the presentation and start talking about.
Absolutely.
We don't know the answer to that. So I'm just, okay, so normally, just so our board knows, ten o'clock is usually our, like, we have a board policy, it says we don't go past ten. Right, we're, we're past ten. So I need thumbs up from the rest of this board to say yes, we're willing to go to eleven. I mean, I think if we don't set a time limit. We're, I want to, I want to say, guys, we don't want to be here till midnight.
Madam President, can we, is it permissible to vote in block D through L? Like, the, the major issue is the, the C DLA presentation. D through L, I have no questions, I'm prepared to vote in block, and then I think we have to have the first administrative.
Not through L, but through K.
You could vote on, you could vote on D through K as a block.
As a block.
Unless you wanted them pulled individually as a board.
Nope.
I'll make a motion to vote items D through K as a block vote.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions, comments, or anything? All right.
Rest each show.
You for answering all our questions, our research, we did our homework already.
And also.
There's a aye?
Aye.
Right, so we, D through K. Um L is our proposed board meeting dates. We really don't have, do we have to do that this meeting? It said we could just review them.
I just want to say the February date, I have a personal conflict. I would like us to explore the next Tuesday if possible.
I would.
If that works for everybody.
What would that date be?
The ten, February ten. The poss- it would possibly be moving it to the seventeenth, but, yeah.
So instead of what it is.
Rob won't be here, he says.
Doing February seventeenth instead. So if we went back.
Right, I don't have an issue with February tenth, I have an issue with nine.
With what?
June nine.
I think the problem with June is that we are under half the cap and budget, have to present and do it the same month.
So I, I will not.
Have to be here.
June ninth, I'm going to be in Costa Rica with the eighth grade DLA, La Vera Vista.
You can either zoom in or.
Or not.
We don't. Well, and plus we don't, we don't approve.
You can blame Arlinda, Arlinda for that.
But you don't approve until the following.
Okay. So it's just. If it records that those are the two conflicts right now, then we can, and then vote next time. June nine.
I think you, you have to keep the June.
Keep June.
You have to keep.
Because we have to vote on July one budget.
Okay.
No, if you can't.
The February seventeen or ten if possible.
Approve is the following ones.
You're good.
Okay.
Great. Oh, so we don't need to make any decisions.
We're not going to vote on that, but, but Anna, will you bring that back to the next one? Maybe by the next one also, we might have some other dates to put in there for special board meetings, based on our search firm dates. Okay, now we're back to C.
All right, it's Megan.
Oh, you're still here.
Oh, presentation, Hannah. I'll skip all the pleasantries since you've already seen me. So today, we're going to discuss, today, today, that's, tonight. We're going to discuss our DLA expansion subcommittee presentation and the work that came out of this um committee. Over the last few months, and I do want to say thank you to those people that have been involved, which I will talk about their involvement shortly. It's happening. I'm not even touching it. All right, so this presentation will share the findings and recommendations from our DLA expansion subcommittee. As we consider whether or not to expand our dual language academy next school year. Our goal is to look at the data, listen to the community, and make a thoughtful student centered decision. All right, so why expand now? Today, today, this evening, we are presenting information gathered to help the board decide on whether expansion. Next year or the following year is needed and feasible. The data will show a growing demand for bilingual programs in our community, paired with early positive student outcomes. Expanding aligns with FSD's commitment to biliteracy, global competence, and equitable access to high quality language programs. Our question is not just should we expand, but where and when is expansion most responsible and sustainable? You also received um an addendum which outlines the, the budget summary. So we gave you a budget total, um but this is expansion of that budget summary um based on the expansion. We'll cover it uh later. Okay, so currently what the district offers in terms of support for dual language. Um we offer professional development, coaching, instructional coaching by our TOSSAs. Um they, they are invited to classrooms at the teachers' request, they support our teachers um with scope and sequence. Um as well as co-planning and model lessons. Lastly, um the district, all the district curriculum, materials and assessment tools. We are always making sure that they're updated, they're relevant, they align with the biliteracy framework. Um and this ensures that our schools are ready to receive and implement them effectively. Expansion should occur where a foundation already exists to be able to sustain this high quality implementation.
Okay, so um student achievement is a critical part of our story. Uh the data shows that English learners enrolled in the DLA um program. Outperformed their non-DLA EL peers on the SBAK English Language Arts by twenty-six percent. Twenty-six points, sorry, um DFS versus eighteen uh points DFS. Uh this confirms what research has long suggested. Dual language programs narrow achievement gaps and promote long-term academic success. High achievement outcomes strengthen the case for expansion, but only if sites are, can replicate these conditions. Uh when selecting expansion sites, home language concentration matters. Schools with high Spanish or Korean populations are, are ideal, because they create balanced cohorts. And strengthen peer language models. Hermosa, Maple, Richmond, and Woodcrest all have strong Spanish speaking populations. So each site's current class configurations tell us how complex scheduling and staffing. Will be if a DLA strand is added. Some sites already manage significant numbers of combination classes, special day classes, and or limited sections. Sites with more stability and fewer combos will be better equipped to add a structured DLA pathway. This becomes a major factor in determining feasibility. While DLA results are strong, the overall English learner data across the four candidate sites. Shows persistent achievement gaps. This reinforces the equity imperative. Expanding DLA could directly benefit English learners at scale. However, it also means sites must be instructional ready with strong systems. Coaching receptivity and stable staffing teams to ensure the program is implemented with fidelity. We also examined mobility patterns. Hermosa continues to be a quote unquote pool school with more students transferring in than out. Indicating desirability and community trust. Maple, Richmond, and Woodcrest show consistent outflow. Expansion could help stabilize enrollment at these sites, but only where the school is structurally ready. Expansion cannot be used as a Band-Aid for enrollment decline, and readiness must come first. So this is a summary of um some takeaways of data that we collected. Um the Spanish, Spanish is most requested, is most requested language by fifty-eight percent, followed by Korean twenty-nine percent. Hermosa and Maple have the highest family interest, about fifty-four percent of the staff support expansion. Though many emphasize the need for professional development and planning support. Altogether, the data point is to readiness is in some areas and continued preparation for others. So this is our process and our timeline that we have gone through, and it's been very transparent with our subcommittee. And over the past few months, the subcommittee engaged in this process. And over the past few months, the subcommittee engaged in this process from August through November. We conducted surveys with families at all the elementary locations at first, and then we concentrated on the four specific schools of interest. We organized community forums to gather input. We reviewed space and demographic data. And this was an inclusive process that guaranteed that teachers, parents, and community members were all involved in the conversation. Visual, visualizing our current data footprint. This map offers a clear representation of our current DLA footprint while emphasizing key areas of interest. The red circles denote schools where interest has been expressed. Interestingly, several schools are centrally located, remaining in proximity to existing programs. Those that are, are current schools are circled in black. Across the district, parent demand is strong. Nearly 58% prefer Spanish DLA with another 29% preferring Korean. In the four focus schools, Hermosa, Maple, Hermosa and Maple show especially high parent interest and willingness to enroll if the program were available at their homeschool. This slide, this slide provides the most important context regarding feasibility. While families overwhelmingly support expansion, staff readiness verify, varies significantly. Teachers at three of the four sites show more opposition than support. Richmond shows strong non-teacher staff support. Expansion next year must be strategic. We must go where staffing conditions will set the program up for success, not strain a site culture. Our existing DLA programs at Raymond and Pacific Drive continue to face high demand and long wait lists, especially for TK and Kinder, when the process begins. At the, as summer approaches, families' lives change, and we see drops in the waitlist due to withdrawals or alternative placements by parents. Our current DLA schools are very popular, and parents prefer to be on the waitlist until an opening occurs.
Here is where all the data comes together. Hermosa has a strong parent interest, sufficient facilities, and experienced administration in, um, working at a dual-language site, and high readiness. Maple has high demand and strong community ties, but facilities and staffing complexities require much preparation, and there is moderate readiness. At Richmond, it is demographically aligned, but the low teacher buy-in and, and there's concerns about grade shifts. So it needs more readiness work. Woodcrest has a strong home language alignment and bilingual teacher support, but there is minimal space in competition with nearby schools. And so therefore, we have labeled it as emerging readiness. This slide is of particular importance because it emphasizes the significance of parking, the need for future sustainability regarding additional classrooms. It also addresses the challenges of maintaining a strand of Spanish dual language. So as you, as you notice, um, some of the main, and these are all concerns that the staff and the, that, from those sites specifically address, so pros and cons. So if you notice, for Hermosa, some of the cons were small parking lot, drop-off zones, scheduling and staffing concerns. Maple, facility concerns, staffing needs, combo classes, parking, and low enrollment. Richmond, once again, we mentioned teacher buy-in, teacher concerns about grade shift, drop-off zones, and having the same cohort from year to year. And then Woodcrest, limited classroom space. The importance of facilities in the program development is crucial because it will determine our ability to launch this program successfully. Hermosa offers six available classrooms, which are perfect for a seamless start. Maple has four classrooms, however, it's located in a two-story wing, which is very difficult if we're trying to open a program with littles, which may require some portable support. Woodcrest contains only one classroom, given the fact that it has a huge special ed, special education population, making the immediate expansion impractical. It's essential that facilities accommodate growth across all grade levels and not just for transitional kindergarten and kindergarten. So, based on the committee's, committee's recommendations or summary, the two top sites for expansion, whether it's be in fall of 2026 or fall of 2027, at the direction of the board, would be Hermosa Drive and/or Maple. Sites continuing the readiness work would be Richmond and Woodcrest. And the ongoing actions would be creating that staffing pipeline to make sure that we are able to staff with bilingual teachers, professional development, and facilities planning. This is most sustainable and instructionally responsible path forward. Now, here's the preliminary fiscal considerations. So based on this, the startup cost would be 400,000, a little over 400,000 to open one TK class. If we would have to open a TK and a Kinder class, it would be a little over 770,000. The ongoing staffing and material costs can be covered through LCFF, LCFF, general fund, lottery funds, and grants. Fiscal sustainability is aligned with long-term strategic goals. So, at the end of it, dual language education empowers our students for a multilingual future. And we do want to say thank you to the subcommittee members and the site leaders that participated in this process. And our recommendation balances the demand with responsibility, ensuring that the new program is positioned to thrive. That's time we'll entertain your questions and comments.
Okay. Ready to, who would like to, who has a question or a comment and would like to start?
That's a clarifying question, I have lots of comments and thoughts. But is, when you were, the last item about cost. So it's sort of a startup cost of about $400,000 to get a new classroom ready. That's assuming there's a space, right? That's not a new portable.
Correct.
But it's, so it'd be TK and then Kinder and then first, all the way through sixth grade. But the salary of the teacher, which would be ongoing, would be about that $100,000.
$150,000.
$150,000, excuse me, $150,000, that would be ongoing forever, but paid through ADA. And so, so it's, I mean, this is a significant cost for our district to start a new program. Yeah. Okay. And the hope is maybe we bring in new kids from the other districts that would supplement with the additional costs.
Correct. The hope is that we would, yes, attract from the outside and not pull from our other sites, which will put a strain on their enrollment as well.
Since we're looking at the, the budget piece, a clarifying question on this one is if, in fact, you were to, if you were to look at like Hermosa, where you have six classrooms. Are those already furnished, or would they need, because on this, you have technology, furniture. I mean, is that stuff already there, or would you have to, would that be an expense that you really had to pay?
It, it, it depends on what class, what, how that classroom is already set up. So if they have empty classrooms and they're already set up for third grade, then yes, we would have to actually outfit that entire class to be able to be fit for TK students, yes.
Sure. Any questions? Has anything to say?
I, I have, I actually wrote something. But I want to, before anything else, thank you for this amazing presentation and everyone that was involved in putting this together, the survey, the, all the work, the meetings, because I know it was a lot, it is a lot. And this was done fairly fast, and so I appreciate all of your time and, you know, meeting on Zoom. I tried to log in, I was late.
Thank.
But, uh, thank you. So thank you, thank you for this. You know, I brought forward the idea of expanding the DLA because many South of Fullerton families shared that they wanted a local option. These are families who literally walk their children to school and often cannot transport their kids to anywhere else other than their homeschool. And so when I saw the maps, the data, I mean, obviously shows clear demand and the need in the South of Fullerton because there are a cluster of three schools that are within walking distance of each other. So, and as a South Fullerton parent myself, who has two daughters that attend the DLA program at Raymond and at La Dera Vista, I mean, there's no program in my homeschool. That's why I have to send, you know, my kids out. And so my advocacy here for a new DLA program specifically in the South of Fullerton is really rooted in equity, access, and opportunity for the families who want it and who don't have the ability to go anywhere else, like some of us do, who take our children to other programs in a different area of Fullerton. One of my concerns in the data was that 46% of the families reported having little to no knowledge of the DLA program. And only 77 families responded out of the more than 1,400 students across all four other schools. So the data that we're looking at is really only 77 families in, and we have 1,400 families approximately in all four of the schools. So, you know, this, this doesn't really show a lack of interest. It really shows a lack of information, to me. And to truly, truly understand community demand, I feel like we as a district, just like Andrea was saying in her speech and her letter today, is we need, we need to increase awareness of the programs that we have in the district, not just DLA, but every single program and every specialty that we offer, because we are such an amazing district. And we offer, you know, we have a variety of different programs that we recommend. So one of my recommendations would be that if we don't feel ready, that we wait until 202017 to expand the DLA program and really like bring the DLA information into these four schools that obviously have a demand. You know, include childcare, whatever it is that, that we need to get a more targeted survey, it's important because a lot of parents can't come, to create a more targeted, like targeted survey questions. Because I know one of the things was, and I had an issue with even when I filled it out, because I filled it out, was if, if you're, if you had to take your child or if it wasn't your homeschool, I didn't like the way that question was worded because obviously I'm going to say, I want it in my homeschool, and I'm not willing to travel because I want the program to come to my homeschool. But there was no other follow-up question, as in like, oh, you know, if it was offered to somewhere where it's walking distance? Or do you have children that are going to go into TK or Kinder in the 2027 year? Because maybe I have a child that might be able to go, you know, that is, that is my homeschool and that is where I intend to bring my child. And really talk about, again, transportation, walking distance, and what supports families need for us to be able to facilitate this, for them to want it. Because I'm not saying that there isn't a demand, and there's obviously a demand when we look at the circles. But when we're looking at 77, 77 families responding out of 1,400, it's not an accurate representation of what our families, you know. And I, like I said, I feel like it's just lack of information. And so while Hermosa shows strong readiness right now, and I would love to be able to just say, hey, let's do the DLA program at Hermosa right now, three of the four highest interest schools are in the South of Fullerton. And, and it's, it's an area with no DLA access and really high concentrations of English, Spanish, English, ELs. And if we look at the data that, in the research that you guys just gave us, ELs are the ones that thrive the most in DLA programs. So why would we not want to offer that to them? Not to say that once we have these presentations and we have, Hermosa might be the one that like really does shine, and all the parents come in and say, hey, we really do want it, then let's go ahead and do it there. But I don't want to rush into starting a program where the, the research really has been rushed and we don't have buy-in from, we want to make sure that our teachers are taken care of, our classified, our staff. We want to make sure that they understand because them too don't understand what the process is. Am I going to lose my job if we have combo classes? Am I going to, now all of a sudden, my child's going to want to go there? I, I don't want to rush into any of that. Again, this is all just my opinions. But, you know, based on, on the data and our equity goals, I don't really feel like prioritizing an expansion and rushing into it right now is something that, even though, again, like I said, I brought it to the board because I want to make sure that we are listening to our constituents and we're listening to the families. But at the same time, I don't want to make it feel like this feels like it's very rushed and we just don't have the right data that we need. That's, those are my comments and my opinions personally.
Yes, I totally agree with you, Vanessa. I think everyone knows I'm a huge fan of DLA. My children have benefited from it. When I worked in international education policy, part of my job was to advocate for mother tongue language and the value of children learning in their first language. And that aids them in transitioning to literacy skills in, than the dominant language. I know it works, and I've seen it in my own life, I've seen it, as we saw in the literature, the data in Fullerton bears it out. But the biggest gift is for kids that are English learners. And the biggest opportunity we have is to provide it where we have majority English learners in our schools. And when we have three concentrated in the South that could all benefit, I realize there also is the risk of polling and then decreasing enrollment at certain schools. But I think that that's the gift we can give to our community, to value the asset that they come with, that I really want to see it happen in one of our South Fullerton schools. And I think that it doesn't look like we're ready yet. So the other major concern I have is our staff are not ready. They, they don't want it. And for good reason, there are concerns, and most of them said they don't really know about the program. When we look at the scale, most people said, I don't know anything, or I kind of know a little bit. Very few said, I'm confident, I know how to, I know about DLA. And it's, it can be a rough transition. I'm just, I, like, I think we have to be fully eyes wide open, confident when we go into this, that there, change is hard. We live, I mean, I, we lived through as parents, the process at Raymond, it was hard. There were folks that felt like their culture, their small little school was changing, and they weren't okay with that. But I think it's a better place now, and I see the benefits for all the kids. And even those kids in the monolingual English traditional classes benefit from that school environment. So I, I personally think we should do a really strong education awareness campaign to talk about the benefits of this program with both staff, the opportunities it brings for increasing enrollment, and for kids, especially English learners, to really just thrive in this opportunity. But I think that that might take us two years to get there. And I, I personally think looking at logistics and space is a big part of that. You know, Richmond has the space, but like if they don't have the people that want to bring it on, we have to respect that and listen to those voices.
I think space is a huge issue, and then staff time, and also having to make, you know, making sure that the teacher professional learning and development is there. Startup cost as well, and, and we're also going through a bond right now. We're going to be thinking about our facilities and our design. I, I think that there is a lot of valid points. Not rushing this process to give the program integrity.
Okay, I, I agree. I think that, I, I don't know if I feel that it was rushed. I feel that, as you said. I feel that, as you said, I mean, I think that there are different ways to gather input from people. And if you're looking at our average parent or average families that are going to school and you ask me these questions, you know, I have many other things to worry about are not going to be involved in that question answer. So maybe as you're going through this year, going to open houses, going to back-to-school nights, going to PTA meetings, and really getting out there and doing that, you know, targeted, um, information, education, feedback, finding out, you know, and, and giving that information. But, but I also want to say that, you know, as we look at DLA, we also have other programs that we're not doing that with, right? So, when we talked about multi-age, when we talked about those things, that at this time, we, we look at everything, right? Because I also don't want it to look like we are targeting just one program, right? And, which we are here. Um, and, and I truly have always believed in this program. For years, we've been want, you know, we wanted to have DLA programs and we couldn't. And bringing this on was something that we had concentrated on for a lo- that we really wanted for a long time as a board. I see the benefit at Hermosa, I'm looking at those numbers and knowing that Hermosa right now is not considered a Title I school. So they're not getting the same type of, of, of benefit that other, that other ELs kids are getting, where there is a high concentration of EL learners there, right? And they're not getting the same thing as other schools are getting right now because they're not designated. So, so having something like this there, to being able to provide that, I think is a benefit. But I also look at the numbers and feel like I, you know, didn't want to go into something new this year anyway. I just think that, you know, gives us some time to really go out there and do the education. And, and if it go, like you said, if it goes back to Hermosa and that's a school that, that really could benefit from this, but not, it's not the right time, then giving us that gift of time, right? And then really, and then at that point, you, you know, who's to say you do one program? Maybe you do two schools, you know, whatever it is that you come back with, it gives you that gift of time to be able to go out there and do mindful, you know, proactive education and recruitment and what have you. And, and making sure that, that our staff know we value their input, right? That we are not going to shove something down somebody's throat because we think it's the right thing to do, right? Because we do need buy-in. We need to make sure that everybody's on board with this for the success of a program, right? We want our children to get what, what's a benefit, but we also don't want to do it at the expense of. So I, I agree. I think that, you know, so, so it sounds like this board is, is asking you to go back, maybe do some more education, some more re, you know, information out there.
What does that look like practically? Would that be inviting like a committee from each school to visit the existing DLA programs and like feel trip, what it looks like or how would we go?
A bus, take a bus.
How do you create opportunities for both staff and parents?
So I think for us, it's putting together, um, a committee at, uh, uh, we have our subcommittee, right, that we put together. But it's putting a, together a committee at each of the four potential sites about who would want to learn more about this program and who's kind of going to be the foot soldiers to support this work. Um, and then also creating an, a timeline of an outreach, um, um, program that, what, what does that look like between now and June? As you mentioned, um, going to, um, the parent, um, um, meetings or whether it's open house, back-to-school night, um, coffee with the principals, all the, all the, all those things. Um, and in addition to, um, presenting, once we meet with the staff and know who, you know, get, have them kind of really look at what a viable DLA program looks like within our district and outside of our district, being able to present that to their staff at a potential staff meeting, so meeting with those principals to say, okay, we need time, um, at your school sites to be able to present, um, and, and not necessarily get a vote that day, but just kind of let it just marinate. Um, and then come back and say, okay, as you thought about this, what does this look like for your school site and, you know, and what kind of support can we offer? So, I think for us now, it's going back to that subcommittee, putting together a timeline, um, of all of the things that we want to happen and by when, and then reporting back to all of you, um, what we've done and what, you know, we found.
You know, I, I go back to looking at the amount of growth in our students. And, and really, you know, making sure that our, that people understand that this is, you know, it's not just a program that's, this is kind of flashy thing, that this program truly, truly has made a difference for the students that are, that are EL students that are going to these classes, that it truly makes a difference in their lives. I think presenting that, you know, maybe I'm optimistic, but presenting something like that to those that care about kids, which all of our, our staff do, but maybe presenting it differently so they could say, you know, look at the benefit of this, you know, this is the outcome for our students and this is what we're going, this is why, this is the why. Right? It's not because of, you know, more enrollment and all that. It's, it's truly to make a difference in those students' lives. And, and I think if people are, you know, start to see it that way, it might be a little bit different. You know, I don't know, but I think that's something to, to really hit home on. And with our parents too. It's like, these are the things that are, are great for our students and this is what you're, this is what can happen for your student if they were in this program.
So I feel like also maybe one of the biggest, uh, things that we could do is bringing students, um, if we're doing like a presentation, um, at, maybe not necessarily with coffee or maybe ca- I don't know, because those are in the morning and the kids are in school. But if we're doing like a big community, uh, meeting, bringing in students who are part of the DLA program and have them present in English and in Spanish and show what this program has already done for our district. And I feel like both teachers, staff, and parents will have, it's, it's not like, you know, saying, I'm going to convince you to join the program. No, it's just creating more awareness of how amazing this program really is and how much it's helping, especially our English language learners. Um, because again, just reading message after message of, you know, I don't know what it's going to do or I'm afraid I'm going to lose my job, like, that's heartbreaking and it's sad. And the fact that, you know, not just from our teachers and staff, but like just the fact that they would think that we're going to push them to do something that, because I, I, I understand, we're not going to get a hundred percent buy-in from every single person because you, it's just impossible. You know, change is hard, it is. Um, but if we can just inform families of the program and even parents, and again, like you said, coffee with the principal, ELAC meetings, PT, you know, PTA meetings and just saying, you know, how many of you would be interested? How many of your neighbors who are having children or have children that are going to be of this age at the time, especially if they live in that community, do they feel would be interested? Because we also have to get the numbers. Um, so I feel like doing all these meetings, um, is going to be important to creating more awareness for the program.
Pretty good marching orders? So, you can calm down now. Now you don't have to like run tomorrow.
Thank you. So, just, just, are you, what's our timeline that we're working with on reporting back to you? I just want to be clear on that.
So if we were to look at the possibility of implementing this, not next school year, but the
So when you said twenty-seven.
Yes.
So whatever you need to work backwards on
Yeah.
in order to get that back to us, in a timely, you know, in something where we're not rushing through it, where we're really transparent and able to provide that information, I think we'd be willing to entertain, right?
And, yeah, I With an update? Yeah, we'll give you a key
Yeah, I could tell you
Okay, with an update of what our plan is and then we'll
Okay.
plan on coming back forward with the information that we gather.
Hope it's all good.
Thank you. Thank you to the principals and staff for staying.
Thank you.
Do we have one more item?
We do.
We do?
I want to thank all of our site administrators. Thank you so much.
Thought we did that.
We know your students will be there tomorrow morning at seven thirty, so thank you.
So we're doing first read for Board Policy three, four, four, zero. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Rob on that one? It sounds like it's purely, you know, procedural.
Demon threshold, the money.
So, we are approve that at the next meeting, the first read?
Correct.
Okay.
No question.
Great, great. I'm hoping we don't have a whole lot of the next one. Are we good? Anyone would like to add anything to the board meeting? Although we've got a lot coming up. Next meeting is, is crazy.
Next meeting is very, very busy as well. We have a lot going on at our next meeting.
And we, um, add having coffee for these late nights.
Okay. I'll say none right now. So, um, our next board meeting is on December the ninth? Oh, sorry. No. Any future board items to a- to ask for us to look at?
I think we should think about, um, adding strategic enrollment management and looking at procuring a CRM system that is going to allow us to do nurture and marketing for the district. I think that was one of the things that the, the
The public comment.
But also, as we think about enrollment decline, I know we're using Power School for certain things, but there's a lot of, a lot out there on the tech side to help improve enrollment marketing.
I do believe that our district's kind of looking, I mean, that was a board goal this year was to look at, um, enrollment, increasing enrollment. So are you saying, so maybe what we could start with is what, what is it currently? What are we doing? And what do we have proposed? Because I do believe that part of our board conversation this year for goals was the declining enrollment and we kind of tasked that out to the department to do, right? And so maybe what we could do is have them come back beginning of the year?
So it'd be like a presentation with discussion?
On how we're addressing decreasing or
And strategy.
Enrollment.
You know, technology, marketing, thinking of, and then also if there are any innovative programs, you know, partner programs that we can bring onsite, not more programs that our staff have to implement.
Could this also be appropriate for a communique, not a presentation?
We could definitely provide you with an update on what, what we're doing so far and, okay? That could be, be the first.
Start.
Yeah, and if that's not sufficient.
And then, they're right, and if that's not sufficient and we want to look at some other options, then we could, we could also then bring something back for, what are some other possibilities out there?
And that the time involved in that communique would, how, how long? I mean, was that something that you could probably put into a communique within?
I mean, I can, I can give you an update on what our enrollment is and what the trends have been as far as what are we, what are we doing to increase enrollment? I think we would be looking at all of our educational programs and different things that we push out with social media. It's, I mean, I'm looking at, at me, but I think our team and everyone here, we can put some stuff together. It's definitely going to take some staff time to do it. We can do that, but, um, I don't, it's probably not going to happen in the next three weeks. We've got Thanksgiving, we've got CSBA, we've got
We want to work towards a strategy then that would be shared with the board.
So if we start with a communique on what we're doing now, that could come within the next few weeks? And then as we move forward, since this is something that is, is probably on everybody's mind, maybe we can get a presentation later.
Maybe we could shoot for the week after CSBA, because that would give us time.
For the communique? Oh.
For the communique.
That's fine, because I think that's going to be important as we think through, um, the selection of the new superintendent. Having that kind of coming at the same time.
Anything else? All right. Say none. Our journey at eleven oh eight. Buenas noches.